Hello and good evening. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commissioner Commission. This is Tuesday, October 18th, and we're at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street. Looking around, I see we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. May we please have a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Next, please stand, face the flag, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Okay. At this point, this is for public -- we'll open the floor for public comment. This is for items that are not going to be addressed on the agenda, so if you have an item you'd like to speak, please come forward and state your name.
Good afternoon, Bill Martin, in Morro Bay. And I know the coastal update is being spoken about later tonight, but I'm not sure if this item's going to be addressed or not. I've addressed it several times in the past, and it has to do with the zoning down in Special Area B, Special Planning Area, Mixed Area B. And this is, again, it's south of the boat launch, it's on Main Street from Acacia all the way down to just where the road bends, just before the Bay Shore Bluffs. Special Planning Area B that you are proposing to eliminate actually has restrictions, and it has zoning in the bay that restricts the use in the bay itself to recreational boating and fishing, where commercial is supposed to be at the northern end, up by Measure D area. It does allow for boat slips and marinas and that, but it doesn't allow for the motels, hotels. The current zoning in the bay, which is incorrect, I believe, is for waterfront commercial. The waterfront commercial zoning is on the land strip, but in the bay has always been harbor zoning. Even the map in 1997 shows it harbor zoning, and I understand mistakenly by a GSI map that it possibly got relabeled at several lease sites down there into waterfront commercial. And that's what I want to see corrected and have it back to harbor zoning. And because the lease sites to the south, down by the inn at Morro Bay, up to lease site 30, it would be 27 to 30, is not in this zoning, and then just north of the boatyard next to the coves, that's lease site 38, that's not in this zoning, only these several lease sites. So I just wanted to make sure, and I've talked about it before, as far as the actual zoning down there needs to be corrected, and by eliminating the Special Planning Area B, you would actually be upzoning that part of the bay by eliminating the restrictions in Special Planning Area B right now. The other thing that needs to be corrected, and I spoke about it before, is the LU2. This is a map that shows the current, what exists in town, and it shows that area, Morro Bay, on South Main Street, as a commercial corridor. I know it's saying this exists now, it doesn't, and I believe now is the time, all you have to do is just white out that little area to get that corrected, so there's no misinformation in the future showing this residential zoning as a commercial zone, which it hasn't been for 20, 30 years. So mainly, I just wanted to make sure that this gets corrected, and whether this is going to be brought up later or not, I'm not sure. But thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak at this point? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. We have no presentations. Then, now we'll, we have the consent calendar. Does anybody have any items on this consent calendar they want to discuss? Okay, do we have a motion then?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any discussion on the motion? I'm sorry. Nope? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now we're public hearings. This is Public Hearing B1, case number, case UPO-481, CPO-544. This is 210 Tascadero Road in Morro Bay. I believe it's the flipos. Do we have any ex parte communication on this? Nope?
I did have ex parte communication with the applicant. I visited the site yesterday and spoke to him in some detail.
Okay. Staff, do we have a report?
Yes. In, I think, I think they're getting it loaded. Oh, this?
Hello?
I received no public comment on this project.
Okay.
Is that ready? So this is, as you mentioned, this is for consideration of approval of conditional use permit and coastal development permit for change in use of the existing commercial building and parking. The site is 210 Tascadero Road. It's the blue, just about in the center, the blue outline in visitor-serving commercial zone. It's in an area that is surrounded by high, intense uses, school, industrial, mixed-use, multifamily, hotel, professional. The site details, the building, the existing building, that's the subject of this application, was built in 1963. It was operated as Flippo's Surfside Skeet Harbor rink for 19 years, closed in approximately 2001. An RV park and mobile home park was built on half of the site in 2006, 2007, with 19 spaces, restroom, and laundry building. The applicant is proposing the use for the building interior to be a small café with a small merchandising area, serving beverages and food, an office and storage space, and the majority of the space would be a vintage classic car display area. This is a blown-up site plan of the existing building. The part that is not a subject to this application is on the top, which is an existing RV manager residence that was part of the original building and serves as the manager residence for the RV park, which is next door. The café store would be in the front portion of the building, restrooms, office storage, and as you can see, there are individual bays for the vintage cars that will have glass doors for viewing, and then there will be cars in the back that will be available for people to get up close and peer in the windows. This is an overall site view. This is a single parcel, and as you can see, the bottom part is existing RV park that was 2006, 2007. Top part colored blue is the parking area that will be restriped. Some of the pavement will be removed for landscaping, and then the green area is the building portion that will be reconfigured to the site plan we just looked at. This is kind of a blow-up of the parking area, how it'll be restriped and reconfigured to get 27 cars, including the required handicapped spaces. And then I have shown on the left side the building, which will be café, vintage cars, restroom, office, storage. This is a photo, I'm not sure what era this is. The site looks pretty much the same, except the surfboard is gone from the mailbox. And that concludes our presentation, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 32-18, making the necessary findings for approval of conditional use permit 481 and coastal development permit 544.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
I think I recall reading that the automobile engines can't be started inside the...
That's correct. Currently, I think when the plans come through for building permit, the applicant may submit exhaust systems that will meet the fire and the building department requirements, so that they can have brief engines running, but currently, the proposal is that they're going to push cars in and push cars out.
Yeah, so that was, that answers the one question. And then, how come, 27 parking spaces seems like a lot for this kind of enterprise? I'm just curious as to why so many spaces needed.
It's a large building, and so the café space really drives the parking. It comes up, I think there's 12 or 13 for that, and then the other uses, it's a lot of square footage. The building's a little over 11,000 square feet.
Nancy, can you confirm that there's no liquor license involved with this?
The applicant, we're not handling a liquor license. The applicant does, I think, would like to serve beer and wine. I don't know what the liquor license process is.
Could you explain the change in the zoning that's being asked? You said that the zoning is changing?
No, there's no change.
Oh, no, the use is changing.
The use of the building is changing.
Yeah, okay, just the use?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, did, my turn. Do we have any requirements for fire suppression or grease hood on this?
The current application is no cooking in the kitchen.
But they have a kitchen.
There is a kitchen there. If they want to prepare foods that are cooked on-site, they need to come back in and maybe add that on their building permit, but I mean, definitely different departments need to review that that was not part of what the proposal is, and there's a condition that specifically calls that out.
Okay, and do we have a condition in here requiring automatic sprinklers in the building?
Yes.
Okay, and so they have to be updated?
I think it is.
Building is sprinkled.
Okay. Will they have to be updated to present code?
I think the system's relatively new. I think the issue is related to heads in the areas where the, where the individual storage areas offer each car, and I think that was a comment by the fire department.
Yeah, so are these partitions full height, or are they just...
I don't believe they go all the way up to the ceiling.
Okay. Okay, and then is there any zoning or overlay for, for design requirements on the facades in this area?
It's a planned development overlay zone.
Okay.
But the item that you had before you is just a change in use for the building.
Pardon?
The item that you had before you is just a change in use for the building and proposing no exterior changes, you know, that would trigger the compliance issue.
But we're changing the use on more than 50% of the building, though.
Which is, again, just a change in use. Our code requires us to come to the Planning Commission for the change in use, so that's why we're here.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, at this point, I'll open it up for public comment. Typically, we have the applicant comes forward, if they so desire. You state your name.
My name's Larry Gesno. We live at 297 Bradley Avenue, Morro Bay. Do, what, what would you like to know?
Do you have a presentation, or if not, then we'll, we'll call you back up if there's any questions from, you know, after a public comment.
Well...
If you're happy with the staff presentation, that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's pretty, you know, it's pretty simple that we're going to try to kind of have it like a car club group of, you know, vintage cars and provide sandwiches and chips and, you know, that kind of stuff, and just, and coffee, you know? And we're hoping to, you know, just make it a place where guys with cars like to go to, you know?
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll open it up for the rest of public comment, and we'll, we'll call you back up if we have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. I'm sorry.
Come on back up.
Come on back up. At least you're getting your exercise.
Yeah, reminds me of Catholic school. Teacher, may I have one more?
I guess my biggest question is, with the high school across the street, those kids go and eat all the time, and I was just wondering, is the café intended to be open to receive some of the school kids during the day when it's in session, and are you thinking about a liquor license with the high school right across the street?
Yeah, we're going to have a beer and wine license, we hope. We went to ABC already, and they said we could only have a beer license because we weren't serving enough food. So if we end up serving enough food, then we have to figure out how to do that because we were not planning on doing any cooking. So we were going to have packaged food, and, except for sandwiches, and maybe some soups, and, you know, some burritos, and then we bring in pastries like, you know, donuts and that type of stuff, and...
Does the license then preclude the students being able to use the café?
Does, no, no, they...
They can use it?
No, yeah, they, there's not a problem with it at all. You know, we sell beer and wine in the RV park. We have a ABC license there for the little store we have in there, and so we hope our customers will be, the high school kids, before and after school, maybe at lunchtime, especially so they don't have to walk all the way under the freeway. We think that'd be safer for them, and then also hope to get their parents to stop in and get some coffee in the morning, you know, that kind of thing. And then you have the surfers. I've talked to surfers, and they just wish they could get something to eat after they're done surfing. And then I have the RV park, you know? They, those people want a place to go. And then I hope to get a bunch of guys like you, old guys, that have cars, that like to talk to each other about cars. And it was a problem developing the space, because it's such a large space, we had to have a low-intensity part of it, which was the storage of the vintage cars. So we're going to try to have it set up with carbon monoxide alarms, so that if, when someone brings a car in, we've already gone through that with, I have a company that's already figured that out, and we have big, huge fans, because when, it was a roller skating rink, you couldn't have all that moisture in there, so they put fans in to be able to draw the moisture from the sweat from when people skate. So we already have a really good fan system. We just need carbon monoxide, and then we're going to have security, and everyone will be able to see their car, which is their baby, on their phone anytime, 24/7. And then we're going to do some architectural improvements on the outside of the building, because it looks like a warehouse, and so we'll just, you know, spruce up the corners and the entry and, you know, do some nice curbing and stuff, not curbing, but landscaping, you know, out in the front. And, you know, we hope, we've, we've only owned the place about two and a half years, and so we've been, haven't been able to find anyone that wanted to develop anything because it was too big. And so, however, there's been lots of people who've wanted to utilize that location for staging area, or for something like, there was a wrestling club, a wrestling, what is it, wrestling, uh, there was a, you know, where they're, they're teaching wrestling at the high school, and the principal came over and asked, could we go ahead and utilize flipos for them to sleep? And somehow, they got bogged down in trying to get it done, but it was fine with us, and that's the kind of thing we like, we'd like to be able to do, because we still are going to have this 20-foot-by-120-foot driveway down the middle of it. It'll have carpet, I found some carpet that you can buy, it's black with a double yellow line down the middle, looks like a street, and, but little things like, at the end, you see the picture with the flipos on it? Well, right under that, I was going to go to the high school and ask them to do an art project, draw a tunnel that makes it look like the carpet, the road just keeps going. And then on the outside, you see the side that faces the freeway, there's 14, is it 14? No, it'd be 20, no, there's seven, seven or eight sections between the posts. I was going to go and talk to the high school and art department, see if they wanted to paint, you know, a panoramic scene on the side there, and give them a section each year to paint from, you know, the, it's just my idea, paint from a panoramic scene from the, what do you call it, campground on the south side of Morro Bay, all the way to where we are, just each little section, so they could have like, I was figuring about seven years of, you know, of doing part of the mural. And so, getting involved with the school, then promoting some events, maybe on the beach, surfing, or there was a running, was it a 5K, 10K? They wanted to stage it, you know, at our place, because they need a staging area, and, but we couldn't do that because nothing was approved for us to do anything. But we think that it would be fun for the community to have this place to go, and we intend to have it open like 7:00 to 7:00 or 9:00 at night, because everything closes in Morro Bay at 5:00, and so we think that people would enjoy having someplace to go later in the evening. And, you know, it's not going to be really big, and for the kids, we're also going to have a line of video games, you know, so they can, we'll get some company that has that to bring those in, and they'll take care of them, but, you know, it'd be just another attraction, you know?
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, have you, you know, my, my daughters used to skate over there, and back in the early, late 80s and 90s, and when I looked at that, this project is having a, like a mausoleum for relics of the past century, I was thinking, would it be, have you maybe considered like, I always thought like maybe a bowling alley or something like that, but you can get investors, that was the problem, why you're going this way, or you think that that...
Well, there was a production company that a local from Los Osos was interested in putting in a Gumby Production Company, and he died, and then there was the people, the people that run Bismarck Bowl and the bowling alley at the college, they came and they were thinking of doing it, but they decided that the cost of putting a bowling alley was too much, they didn't feel Morro Bay had enough demand, and they didn't want to go the same way that the, the flipos went and the, what do you call it, miniature golf courses went, they just couldn't make it, they didn't have enough volume, and, you know, there's, I'm trying to think who else, there's, there's hasn't been anybody else that wanted such a large space, you know? So that's a really big problem. It's a very large space, and trying to figure out how to get someone to come in. So I decided that I needed to do it myself, because no one wanted to invest the money to do it. And I've actually looked for someone else to run the coffee shop, you know, coffee house and stuff, and just no one really seems, and it's the, there's no surplus productivity at that location. It's got to stand on its own. It's got to attract people there on its own. So it has to be something where some people will come, because it has something there that those, they particularly want, and, so I think that I've identified where we think we're going to get customers, and, and I think that vintage cars and hot rods, there's a lot of older guys in Morro Bay that probably, their wives would like them to have a place to put the car that's in the garage, and then they'd like to hang out with some guys and talk about it, you know, there. And I think that's, I think it'll be a real fun thing, and I want to set it up to where it's like a little government there, where they run it like a club, and then they will do their own promotions for, or, you know, fundraising things or something on their own. Yes?
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions?
I don't.
Just?
It's not so much a question, it's just a comment. I recently saw something like your property, a large property that was repurposed, and it struck me, what they had done on that occasion is they had created little cubicles like you're creating, and then they had turned it into kind of an incubator, where they were offering pretty reasonable rent rates to photographers, artists, leather workers, people did mosaics, clothing designers.
If this doesn't work, I'll come back and talk to you.
I'm thinking it might not be mutually exclusive, you might be able to have, you have a big space.
I agree, you know, but I got to get something going, because it is too big, and what you're talking about is people can't, they don't have enough capital to really start big, so they need something small, and that may work, at, maybe at a later date, but I think this is going to work, and I think the people, I think the community will like it. I think, you know, I think there'll be a lot of guys that'll be really happy, so...
Okay, well, great. Do we have any further questions? All right, well, thank you very much. We'll close public comment at this point. Do we have any discussion on the item?
I got a question for Scott. Scott, do you, you know, like, if, if this is going to be like a car hangout, can we require like a, like a Tesla Supercharger for electric vehicles there as part of the condition of change of use?
They are restriping the parking lot as a part of the project. I don't know whether there's three-phase power over there. There probably is, because the plant's down the roof on it, so there should be three-phase power.
Yeah, there should be three-phase.
So it might be within the realm.
Okay. Yeah, no fast charging when, somewhere would be great. You can go ahead and sit down. Now, we'll, we'll call you back up if we have more questions.
It does have solar on the roof, so we...
Yeah, it's got, the building has a lot of solar on the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've tried to be as energy efficient.
While you're, while you're up, would you, would you be amenable, put in a level, you know, a level-three fast, fast charging system? They usually are for pay, you know, and they're...
It takes 15 years to get your money back.
Right.
And normally, what they do is, it's, I have checked on that, because I thought right close to Highway 1, just before you're going to take your Tesla up, you know, you'd want to have a place to charge it, and, you know, I mean, I, if that's what it takes, I guess I would go ahead and do it, but I would prefer not to, because it's, it's, it's an extra expense, and normally, you put those in because you have a large shopping area, and people will come and shop, and that's why they come and charge it there, because they're going to be shopping for an hour or two, so they get their full charge in. And that's the attraction that vendors normally, that's why they put them in, is to get them there, and the cars that are going to... And the cars that are going to be there most likely don't have electric engines.
Right. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, we'll close public comment on that. Any other discussion, Joseph, or, we'll go, we'll come around this call, this way?
Only that, given, given its location next to the high school and close to the shore, it's an area that is strong in terms of creating an impression of Morro Bay and in the immediate vicinity. So I, I don't know, you know, what our authority or what our incentives are for improving the outward appearance of the, of the building, because it sorely needs some improving. So that's, whatever we can or might consider doing, that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
Jesse?
So the building inspector, the building inspector inside of me is a little concerned about working on vehicles inside there, so that would be my only concern, is that we maybe condition that there would be no, no repair, fueling, anything of that sort, to just, you know, as safe as humanly possible. Yeah?
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I remember this building from taking my kids to the high school for about six years. I, I think it's really, it's really tough to make a decision on, on something like this, something that is used is better than something that's not used. I think letting the thing stay vacant is, is really not a, not a good thing. And so I think something that does the beginnings of a change here, my guess is, and I do wish you success with this, where did you go? Yeah, I do wish you success. But my guess is in 15 years, this is going to be a really different parcel. And this is, this is kind of temporary. I do agree, at least my dream in the city is that this is a very important block, it's across the street from, from one of our institutions and visitors going down to the end, in the RV park. So, I'm sad there's not more intention about what to do with the outside. The landscaping will help, the striping will help, the keeping the building tight and dry and, you know, will, will help. So I think it passes the threshold of what I would want to see, but not merely taking advantage of what could be, but it also is a difficult property like many of our retail properties are in North Main corridor as well, so.
Yeah, I, I would rather, I mean, personally, I'd rather see it be used, not worry about like old guys with cars like us, you know, but more like the newer generation and what, you know, what, what forward-thinking. But I could also understand, you know, the, the owners, you know, tried to reach out to certain investors. You know, something like this, I think, is a, is an opportunity for collaboration with different, you know, even public-private agencies to collaborate with, like even, like maybe collaborating with the schools or something. I, I just, for me, I just see this as a area where, like, if you wanted like to, to, like visitor survey, or if you want to like address with the high school, I'm not sure what ideas, but if it could be better use, a better use of it. Not that I don't like old cars, but I, I just think that, it just, I, I just think it's a missed opportunity of something really forward-thinking. Regarding, if it gets approved for cars, I, I would really strongly recommend that we, we put in, put in electric car charging stations in, in the lot.
Okay, and you know how much of a proponent I am for like, for EV charging? I don't think this is the appropriate place for it, just because there isn't, there isn't a place for somebody to, to kick back for half an hour, an hour, you know, while the car's being charged. I think the more appropriate place is down on the Embarcadero in one of the public parking spots, parking, parking lots. So, I'm not going to push for requirement on EV charging here, although I would love to see it. My concern is more, you know, this is the private enterprise coming forward with this plan, I don't think we can really debate what's going to be most appropriate there other than what the plan we have in front of us. What I'm, what I'm disappointed in is just the treatment of the facade. I'd like to see a little more, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more intention, any murals that are put forth, you know, they need to be approved through the sign ordinance, you know, so they'll need to come back before the city and at least have, you know, staff approval on those, so.
This application does have one, two signs, monument sign.
Right.
Along the street, and then the flipos sign over the door, that is the similar kind of text and size of, as the original.
Okay. And so, the way I understand it, Scott, we're, we can't really, you know, request for a better improvement or a better facade improvement plan on this?
It's because they're making no changes to it, this is really just a use change in a building. I would add something to, I mean, I don't know if this makes you feel any better or not, but as Mr. Gessner indicated, he's owned the building for, you know, a little over two years, and he's literally been in our office probably every two weeks, sometimes more, talking to us about ideas and trying to come up with ideas to use the building. And that's for that entire period of time, he's been trying to come up with something, and this is, this is the thing that he's been able to bring forward, you know, to put something in the building, because as you know, he's owned it for a little over two years, and it sat vacant that entire time. And all the things he talked about, you know, about ideas that he's had, and folks he's talked to, and businesses that might go in there, those are all conversations he's had with staff. It's just those, those opportunities didn't come forward. And so now he's, you know, taking it by the reins and saying, okay, well, I'm going to put some more money into the building, other than just purchasing it and, you know, and I'm going to put some money in the building to put the use in there. And I don't think anything that he's doing as it relates to this, it really means, the shell of the building remains intact, that entire space, I mean, these are partition walls effectively, you know, I mean, so there's, he's not putting in anything that can't be easily changed, you know, based on something different coming forward. I mean, we have an application that's in-house that will come to the planning commission in the not-too-distant future, that's for a hotel across the street, you know, at that corner related to where the southbound ramp is. So, I mean, things are going to change. Commissioner Lucas pointed that out, he's right, that this area is not going to look the same. So, you know, in the, in, you know, in a few years. So, as it grows and as we add more folks to that area, then maybe uses become more viable there and it shifts because Mr., because the applicant, you know, doesn't want to operate the facility himself any longer. And, you know, get a tenant in there that's willing to, you know, expend funds to do that. So, and that's when you might see, you know, an upgrade of the facade and those types of things.
Yeah, and I also see this area as being a prime location or prime for a master plan, you know, coming forward, and so that's, this area will, will be changing. Okay, do we have a motion? How do we, anybody want to proceed with that?
Chairman, I'll move that planning commission approve UPO 481, CPO 544, the conditional development permit and conditional use permit for 210 Tascadero Road.
I'll second. Second, and discussion? Are we good?
One comment.
Okay.
I, I do wish instead of the murals, you'd just paint it candy apple red. Seriously, it, it's, it wants to jump at you, not, not receive.
I would go with, you know, green racing stripes, but.
I, I, I kind of strongly suggest that we put in a EV station there, since it's, all the cars are going to, you know, it's a car culture there, so I'd like to see a supercharger there.
Okay, so we have, we have a suggestion on that, let's have a discussion.
I'll, I'll talk to that. I, I agree that it would be a great thing, I agree with, with the chairman here, where it's just, it's, it's, it's not where I want to dig my heels in, it would be awesome if Larry decided to do it. I think it's got to make sense financially for him to do that, and I don't think it's the city's, it's the city's place to mandate that for this project. I want to see this project, I want to see something happen there, so I mean, if, if, if that's a future down-the-road kind of item, I would strongly encourage it, but I just don't think mandating it is the right thing.
Joseph?
Yeah, I, I, as much as I'm in favor of those kind of installations, I'm sympathetic to the fact that there just aren't a lot of people visiting this area right now. And then, thinking also in terms of the suggestion of painting it red, I, I would really encourage you to really give some thought to the, the color scheme, just painting, that might accomplish a, a great deal in, inexpensively making it more attractive.
Michael?
Yeah, I love the idea of an electric charging station, but I, I also know that at this point, with the, with the neighbors being RVs, we don't have a lot of RV capable, we don't have a lot of electric trucks yet. I don't think the high school is a good user of, of the facility. So I think at this point, it's, it's asking a little much of, of what, by all evidence so far, seems to be a, someone who wants to make a modest improvement, I think down the line, these things will tend to jump out as better opportunities. But I, I don't see anybody in the immediate neighborhood that would be really taking advantage of it. So I, I love Richard's idea, but I'm going to go with my colleagues and say, I don't want to condition it.
You know, I would like, if at all possible, I'd rather see the, the city create some kind of incentive for it, rather than a mandate, you know, so that's, so I'm not going to require it on this. Richard, I appreciate it, and I'm driving an electric car here tonight, so I would, I could use it, but I don't think I'm going to mandate it.
Yeah, I just, I think that it's one of the, it's a cultural awareness that we need to start changing our way of thinking, and, you know, it's part of an attraction that the city, as it reaches out, I mean, they spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars reaching out on marketing and stuff, and I think that we may not, you know, have the, like, you know, mandate, but, you know, if there's going to be a hotel going across the, the way there and stuff, it's kind of like an area where it's a, it's a message to people that we're thinking forward.
And I think, you know, in the hotel parking lot, you know, mandating level two, at least level two charging in the hotel parking lots, I think is perfectly, you know, acceptable.
I actually made a note to that effect.
Pardon?
I actually made a note to that effect based on comments.
Well, and, and one more thing on that, I mean, maybe possibly in the future, the city could enter some kind of a revenue-sharing type of a situation with an applicant that's willing to do that, you know, that, that's maybe a possibility down the road.
Yeah, and I still think the best use is, is down, to attract the people to the Embarcadero. And, you know, that's, that's where the city's going to get the best bang for the buck, and we've got three-phase power right there at a couple of different locations. Okay, so let's, let's call a vote on this.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
No.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Aye.
Chair Lure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So, next on the agenda is item number B2. This is case, it's an appeal of CPO-575, site location is 2575 Greenwood Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we have any expedited communication on this item?
Yes, I, I met one of the appellants and, and the, and the owners of the subject property when I went to look at it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I, I went and looked at the place and I saw a couple of neighbors and applicant.
Great. Okay, staff report?
Okay, thank you Chairman Lure. So the, well, first, before we start, I'd like to let you know that we did receive some correspondence after the publication of the staff report. You have received copies up on the DS, and there are copies for the public on the table. So, the, this item before you this evening is an appeal of an administrative-level coastal development permit that was issued to owners Dan and Dinah Kroll at 2575 Greenwood. Appellants Kate Milligan and Judy Johnston are appealing the director's decision to allow the creation of an accessory dwelling unit in the R1 S2 zoning district. The coastal development permit was issued on August the 6th of 2018, and it was to allow for the creation of an attached accessory dwelling unit within the existing garage, which is shaded gray in the site plan, and the removal of a non-conforming shed, which is seen at the left of the image here, both images there, actually. So as, hmm, well, that's interesting. So as part of the approval, staff added conditions of approval to the project that included a requirement to remove the existing driveway, leading to the proposed ADU, and prohibiting a gate across the driveway access to the uncovered and unenclosed parking spaces approved to mitigate for the loss of parking in the construction of the ADU. So because Pico is a dead-end street, the project was also conditioned to require a traffic barrier along the proposed fence line, which shall include a no parking sign. Staff has also specifically conditioned the project to require parking in a, in a manner that is consistent with the motor vehicle code. Okay, the appeal issues brought up by the appellants are fire and safety, parking, drainage, and trash cans. So illegal parking associated with the subject parcel at 2575 Greenwood does create a hazardous situation by impeding the ingress and egress to the appellant's property. This is an ongoing problem at this location, and as discussed previously, staff has conditioned the project accordingly. With the requirement for a traffic barrier and a no parking sign, parking in this hazardous manner will be clearly prohibited. As seen in this image, parking regularly occurs in a manner that blocks an approved RV parking space that's located along appellant Johnston's rear property line. However, as again previously stated, a condition of approval was included to reiterate that parking shall occur in a legal manner, in compliance with the motor vehicle code. And also, another issue brought up by the appellant is parking in the public right-of-way adjacent to the exterior side yards. However, of course, parking is allowed in the public right-of-way. The proposed project will not increase impervious area on-site, and removal of the existing driveway will improve drainage off-site. The drain pipes shown here in the image at the top, as well as, you can see the location with the red arrow, the, they're located on the adjacent parcel to the south, and so they don't pertain to this project. There was a lotline adjustment, so the lotlines wiggle there, it looks like it would be on 2575 Greenwood, but actually those drain pipes service the adjacent parcel to the And then also, with, with regard to the trash cans, they are meant to be placed within the public right-of-way on collection day. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's approval of coastal development permit, number CP0575, for the project at 2575 Greenwood, by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 31-18, with the added condition of approval that prohibits a gate that blocks the approved parking spaces. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have questions for staff? Michael?
Joan, can you, can you tell us for the record what, what kind of options there are for the parking replacement? I know the, the accessory dwelling unit doesn't generate parking requirements, but for the house itself with the garage removed, what, what are the onsite possibilities? It's, it seems to imply that we're going to see a set of, or you'll see a set of drawings at some point that show how that's accommodated.
In the approved plans that are attached as an exhibit to this staff report, so state law requires that the parking places be on-site, so uncovered and unenclosed anywhere on the subject parcel. So, as we approved the project, there's a parking space at the rear in the location of the existing shed at this point, and as well as another parking spot accessed from Greenwood from the other side of the front. There is space in the front to allow for two parking spaces in that location as well.
So, so the shed you're talking about is adjacent to the garage now?
Yes, sir.
And that's going to come down?
Yes, sir, you can see it right to the, above the shaded portion, that's where one proposed parking space is, and then you can see the other darkly outlined space, that's the second required parking. space, that's the second required parking space.
Okay, Richard?
Joan, can you explain to me how the Public Works addressed that drainage that ends up flooding the neighbor's garage when that went down?
At this point, sir, I cannot. I can tell you that it was a part of an approval for an adjacent parcel, and so is not really pertinent to this, this proposal. It's a separate issue.
I would also note that the parking area that they have for that adjacent residence is also, doesn't have a standard approach, which would stop the lot from experiencing flooding issues if it had a standard approach. It doesn't, because it just has a flat concrete pad that goes onto the site.
Okay, and then the other parking option is on the Greenwood side, there's a fence, a gate, right? And then you could park the car like basically in the front yard and then?
There are other potential parking iterations onsite. I mean, there are, there are other ways for them to fit parking onsite. However, this is, was their proposal, and it was approved in this way. However, I mean, it would be up to you.
If, if we were to consider the parking onsite off of Greenwood in the front, would it, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, we don't allow gates, yeah?
That's correct. And this, this project has been conditioned to prohibit gates across driveway access to the approved parking spaces. It is shown on the plans, but the project has been conditioned to remove those gates upon building permit issuance.
Okay, but when I talked to the owner, they said they have a dog and stuff, so would it be, would it be possible to condition and allow the gate or not?
They can provide fencing in another manner. The space doesn't need to be, I mean, they could fence around it. That's not the only option. I mean, and this is basically, I mean, remember, this is, we prohibited the gate because of commentary from the planning commission. You all have provided comment on several different projects, no gates. So staff followed through, no gates.
Okay.
I'm talking about in the front though, you know, right? The front gate?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, no gates.
Joseph? I'm not even sure of the relevance of this, but is the garage which being converted, was that a permitted structure at some time, or?
The early permitting history at this project is, or this parcel is a little nebulous. However, we do have a permit that allowed them to enclose that carport space as a garage and put a patio and a hot tub above. So we do have record of city approvals for that space, yes.
You know, I'm recalling the discussion about gates and fences in another part of Morro Bay, and they were at a, they were at a different height. The nature of the houses was different. You know, and I'm, I'm left with this notion of picket fences convey a kind of an invitation rather than, you know, a prohibition, so I'm not quite sure where I'm going with this thought, but.
This is gates across the parking space?
Yeah.
So all the conversations we've had is related to people proposing gates that go across the driveways?
Right.
Not just fences in the front in general? You can have fences in the front?
No, I agree. But I'm, I'm thinking of ways to distinguish some of our past decisions in this one. I'm not sure of what the decision would be, but I can see distinctions.
Okay.
Jesse?
No.
Questions? Okay, I'm, I don't care if it's a picket fence or barbed wire, I do not want to see gates across driveways. You know, I don't think it, I don't think we can, I don't think in good conscience we can condition a large house and restrict their, a gate on a, on a large upscale house and allow, allow a gate across, you know, a small, you know, small humble house. I think gates are gates, and there shouldn't be a lot across driveways. I think it's, I think we've been pretty clear on that, so. But anyways, I want to be consistent on that. My question for you, Joan, is we're seeing a conversion of two covered parking spots to an ADU that is not replacing those two covered spots, although the two covered spots are required by the primary dwelling. So is, does that open this up to happen, you know, everywhere?
Yes, a great question, I can speak to that. So we, as a city, have no say. It's state law. There was an update to the accessory dwelling unit law from the state of California. That only requires the replacement of those two parking spaces anywhere on-site, uncovered and unenclosed.
And within setbacks also?
They, and it can be in the setbacks, it's explicit in the update to the state law that it can be in the setbacks. Of course, they can replace them as covered parking. The applicants had originally wanted to build a one-car garage in the location of the shed. However, it was a lot coverage issue and a setback issue and those sorts of things, so this is the proposal you have in front of you, or the permitted project that you have in front of you with this.
This is allowed by right, then?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, any further questions for staff? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Would the appellate like to, to speak first? Okay, please come forward, state your name, and, and talk to us.
I'm here with Judy Johnston, I'm gonna talk first, that's okay. Before I start, I really want to thank, I really want to thank Joan for being impartial and really explaining this process to us. You've been, like, we looked up the thing on the, like, your objective and what you guys do as a community, and she really upholds what, you did a really good job. I mean, we're not friends, I'm just saying how she did it, and how she conveyed this report was very impartial, and I really appreciate that. My name's Kay Milligan, and I'm the homeowner at 2600 Elm Street, where I've lived for the past 27 years. I'm appealing the city's approval of the 380-foot attached unit to the parcel at 2575 Greenwood Avenue. The construction of this unit causes serious concern for not only my property, but that of Judy's, who lives on the other side, at 2590. As stated in my last letter of the appeal that you all have with you dated August 15th, Judy and I understand the studio permit is inevitable. We know that. That is not the issue that we're addressing tonight. We are concerned about the proposed parking on Pico Street, which is located in the backside where we are looking of the Kroll's property. The proposed parking space in their permit plan would move another 15 feet towards my, towards my property, which would make it even greater challenge for me to enter and exit my driveway and garage daily. I'm hoping that you understand every effort on our part has been made to convey to the Krolls that their illegal parking has completely prevented us from existing and entering in our driveway. It has been disregarded for seven years, and if you look in your notes, in 2012, Rob Levitt sent them a letter and gave them, and you have a copy of the documents right there in order to comply with the city's request, and then had been closed in our appeal. It's not our place to have to ask people to move their cars so we can access our own property. The pictures I've sent you showed you exactly what our concern is. This is why I feel so completely disrespected as a neighbor and disregarded in the way that causes me extreme stress. Why should I have to ask them to move their cars? So I can own my own property? I kinda blame the city for making that happen, to make me feel like that. The photos display everything in terms of the Krolls' constant violations that you see there. And now, since we did this on August 15th, I have 40 more photos where they disregard, they know why I'm upset, and they're still doing it. So, they continue to request, and I would like to remedy, remedy this situation easily, but obviously, it's not happening. So why can't they park their cars in front of their own residence, in the front of their house in Greenwood? I should never be in a place, in a position, I have to ask anybody to move. Finally, the drainage is another major concern that we've all, and you've saw it, Richard. The proposed plan for drainage will affect both the residents because it pushes away from their property and flushes into ours. I'm a community-minded person and been thrust into a daily confrontational situation, and I need some peace. I've tried to keep this as brief as possible and stick to the facts. The instruction of this presentation was to just state, state the facts and not get emotional. I've done my best, but this is emotional, it's my home. So Judy wants to talk, and then I'll stand over here if I have a few more questions I want to ask you, and you can ask me.
Okay, great, we'll, we'll have the other appellate come forward, and then have further public comment, and we'll, if we have questions for you, we'll bring you back up. Please, please address the commission, thank you.
Just wanted to let them know it wasn't personal.
Please state your name first.
Judith Johnston.
Okay, great, thank you.
Homeowner at 2590 Elm, and it's been a family home for the last 40 years. So we've seen a lot of changes, a lot of things going on. And I have no objection to affordable housing. It's something greatly needed, and I know it's desperately needed in Morro Bay. However, at what cost has this come? Looked at the Morro Bay statement, mission statement and goal, and it was for happy neighborhoods, where they had, everybody had equal input. And I'm thinking, God, that's the way it used to be. We were such a great neighborhood. Weekly barbecues, everything going on. And with the influx of housing with no parking, it has become such a doggy dog, that neighbors are at each other fighting for those parking places night and day. And it hit me that, you know, what cost is this going to do to the neighborhood? This happened 2011 when they opened up the dead-end street. Now, the Krolls have like five drivers in their house, so they have a lot of parking with one parking spot on their property. So it's impacted there. The low-income housing that was built behind Sprouts, they don't allow their participants to park in their property if they have a leaking car, if they have a camper or motor home. And at one point, they were parking, this is just after the streets had been paved, parking out there because they were leaking, and I called, called the police, which is what they've said, you know, if you have a parking issue, call the police. Called them multitudes of times, never, never a ticket, never an issue, never, just say, oh, you know, they're neighbors, and it's like, okay, well, what's going on? But that was a hazardous situation. We now have this huge oil spot, but anyway, there. So we're looking at this, and with all the low-income housing parking now on the street, Tuesdays, the doctors and nurses come, they're parked all the way down the street. I have a front door, entryway. There's no way anyone ever gets in my front door. To access the front door, you have to go in the neighbor's driveway, up over the lawn to get to the front door. I mean, it's just, it's quite annoying. But the parking is the issue here for us. All these houses come, and we want housing and income. It's better than the weekend rentals that are currently at the Kroll's. And we, the, so we want a good neighborhood. We're trying to foster neighborhood policy. But you, of course, know with the city paving, just the portion of the street with the, with the curbs on them, everyone has usurped the encroachment. There is absolutely no parking spots on Pico. If you, you know, they say, oh, you know, everybody knows they can pull up over the lawn, their landscape, trees, just, you're supposed to just drive right over them, go over the curb. We go, no, nobody knows that, people don't do that. So the, the parking has just been exacerbated to a point that is intolerable. And it's not just us neighbors, the neighbors all around us have virtual complaints. My 87-year-old neighbor on the other side can barely back out of her driveway. So the situation has become unattainable, and now we're adding more to the situation? It just seems like, it's just exacerbated to the point that we're just not getting results. And every time, and I have situations and letters with the city, back and forth, back and forth, and their answer is always, just call the police, call the police. And they've told me, everyone on that street is parked illegally, because they're parked vertically instead of horizontally, and you should call the police every day on every one of your neighbors. Well, no, I don't think I'm gonna do that, that's ridiculous. But it's just, the parking is so bad, there has not been one week in the last six years that I have not been, that has not blocked the parking. And you can see by all the pictures in there, we had to actually, to prove this, we put up cameras. And in these cameras, it shows that every day, somebody parked there, every single day. And it's, it's just become a situation of parking instead of what it should be about housing. So, and lastly, I know it's ridiculous, but the trash can issue does upset me. They, they have, you know, trash cans that bring them 100 feet down the driveway to put in front of my house, and now with a new unit, there will be six more trash cans. So, I mean, if it was your house, I know you wouldn't want nine trash cans land, lined up in front of your house for those days of trash removal. And it's, it's, of course, when the parking situation is so dire, these trash cans are taking a hit too. But it's really a situation that the whole neighborhood is involved in now. And we want a happy neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further, further comments? Please, please step forward, please come forward. Please state your name and?
Hi, my name's Clay Kearney, I live at 2600 Elm. We've had this issue for the last, since 2011. We've talked to the city about it, we've talked to, your city, what was his name? Barry. We talked to Barry about this issue as it was developing. And at one point, he said, hey, we just want you guys to get along. So we tried to make an agreement where they would just park one car next to Judy's house. The area that they'd like to park in is next to, adjacent to Judy's house. It happened, it went on for a little while, maybe a year, and all of a sudden, there's two, three, four cars, and as many as they could get. So I contacted Dan, the person that they asked me to, to communicate with and make an agreement, and he said, well, our situation has changed. And it was kind of a slap in the face. Of course, we know that your children are getting older and they're gonna drive, of course, we knew that they were going to need more parking. So it, and I asked him at the time, wouldn't you want to come and talk to me before you, you know, went against our agreement? But it doesn't matter what we've talked to these people about, it's, you know, and it's weird, I don't really feel like I'm on, I'm getting on them, it's, it's the city that I'm concerned with. There's a situation that's been set up where the fence should be all the way across, just like all the other fences on Greenwood. That should have never been opened up for parking, because there's no way to turn around. The only way to turn around is to turn around in one of our driveways. And I can understand if you came into a new area, and you know, everyone's turned around in someone's driveway before, but you would never do that on a consistent daily basis. So it's not really their fault, it's the situation, there's nowhere to turn around. The drainage on our side of, not Judy's, where you saw the picture, we have drainage from the house behind us and the Kroll's house coming down our side. That's, that's, that's where we access our driveway. And that, that's a big issue, because there's so much drainage that the, it has undermined the pavement. And when you redid the, you know, you did the slurry, redid the pavement recently in the last year, they wouldn't, it's so undermined, it's, it's gravel because of all the water that's run through there, and they wouldn't slurry that side. So it's just getting worse and worse. It's like there's, like a sand pit at the bottom, because so much water is drained through there, and it's coming from their driveway, or their homes. The last thing is, there, you know, it sounds good coming from the city, it sounds good that pay all these, all these rules will be, you know, all these rules will be followed. But in reality, there, there was no parking in the front of their home, and there was no parking in their, in their garage for five years. There wasn't one car. And what happened is they took out the front driveway where the, where the, where the garage was and landscaped over that. Their, the driveway in the back, that's mostly on, on city property. So it's, it's hardly any of their, there's no way you could park a car in their driveway without being on city property. And then lastly, they approved a, a hot tub, and because of that, there's only one car that could ever be parked in that garage. And like I said, they didn't, it's such a small area, none of their cars would fit. Well, they recently bought some really small cars, but for five years, they had no parking on their property. And it, you know, it sounds like, okay, you know, you guys can say, oh, let's go ahead and do this, and everybody will comply. But we have overwhelming evidence that that was not the situation. We've written, you know, we've got notes, we've got pictures over and over and over. There's a situation one time where they were blocking our driveway, we couldn't get in and out of our driveway. So there's no access to their home from Greenwood, from Pico. So we had to get in another car, drive all the way around to the front of the house, and ask them to move their car. These are things that are just unacceptable, you know, for a homeowner. Why do we have to plead and beg and call the police to get someone to quit blocking our approved access?
Okay, thank you very much. Next, any further comments? Please step forward. Please.
I too want to thank you for taking time to deal with our issues. I'm Dan Croll, and this is my wife, Deana Croll. We are the owners of 2575 Greenwood. We do have four children, two girls currently in Morro Bay High School, two boys that are now away at college. Currently, we have two cars, but there's been times when we've had up to four cars. We purchased the property on 2575 Greenwood in 2011. And at that ti, at the time of the purchase, there was the non-conforming existing shed. More recently, when California started promoting accessory dwelling units, we, this kind of prompted us to go down to the city and see if we could possibly turn the shed into an accessory dwelling unit. Due to lot coverage issues, as have been mentioned, we went with the city's recommendation to move forward on turning our existing two-car garage into a accessory dwelling unit and proposing two uncovered parking spaces on the property. In accordance with the city's recommendation, this project would include a barrier at the end of Pico with a no parking sign, a fence across the rear of our property, and a clearly defined parking spot on the property next to the existing garage. My hopes are that these things would help solve some of the issues that have been raised in the appeal. We've also asked the six other neighbors that are, access the Elm and Pico intersection, if they are opposed to this project, and we do have six letters from the neighbors saying that they are also supportive of the project. Sounds like we're fighting an uphill battle on the fence issue, but I'll bring it up anyway. So the gate on the front part of Greenwood, we would like to request that we get to keep our gate, because we do have a dog, we are foster parents, sometimes we do respite care for small children that play in the front yard. And so we'd love to request keeping the gate, which would, according to the plan, it looks like it opens outward onto public property, but we would have it open inward onto our private property. In conclusion, we believe the project will be an improvement of the property through providing additional housing as well as removal of a non-conforming shed, and possibly creating a better situation for parking in the rear of the house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name's Deana Croll. Deana Croll, I'm a co-owner of 2575 Greenwood. I wasn't planning on speaking, because I thought Dan covered it well, but I feel very misrepresented by Clay and Kay and Judy, so I feel like I need to represent myself. When they say we've, I, first of all, Kay's never asked me to move a car. The pictures they have, in many of them, they are people that have been renting at Judy's house, three trucks were in a row. Again, I don't want to slander them. I, I just believe that it comes down to their word against ours, and I just want to say that we have never parked a car in front of their driveway. I know that the picture shown is like somebody driving up to unload a paddleboard they borrowed and left, and I know that bothers them. We've told people, don't come up that way, please. But it's never parked in front of their driveway. Clay and Kay have two parking spots on Elm and two next to us on Pico that they rarely park a car at, and Judy is rarely home.
Uh, please, please.
And Judy is rarely home. And I, I'm just here to say that, I know they say that we're always parking there, but our house is here, there's two right here that have gates that go to Pico. Both of those neighbors have had aggressive confrontations with Clay about many things. Right next to Clay and Kay, Jim and Sherri Hayes, they also wrote a letter, also very aggressive. He's yelled at my children many times, saying, when your cars drive up here, you bring, it brings rocks, and want you to sweep the road. My child has done that. Across from Jim and Sherri on Elm and Pico is Doug and Rosa. They also have had many aggressive encounters. Also, at the Ocean View area, there are a lot of people, they almost look transient, I don't know if they are, they walk through dispensers. Lots of their campers are parked there, I will say that. But I, the, all those cars are not ours. The police are called all the time, and I see them go out and they mark the tire, I think, not ours, never. Ours have never been marked, because they count, like, how many days they're parked there. I don't know how much time they spend there and patrol that area, but it's been very difficult for me. I try to not go that way. I park my car all the time on Greenwood, and we have a little Mini Cooper that fits right in the garage. And I'm just here to say that I don't want to have any disputes with these neighbors, but it has been so difficult. And I, I just wanted to represent myself, because I feel like I am being very misrepresented. And I tell you, if I would have asked all the people that read the letter, that wrote letters to you today to come, they would have come. I did not want to burden them. And I just feel like I had to speak. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Please step forward for... Okay, seeing, you've, I'm sorry, you've already, you've already spoken. So bring it back to the commission. Do we have any questions for the appellate? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And questions for staff or comments?
Joan, I was just wondering, is it in our purview to condition the project to park off of Greenwood without any parking off of Pico?
Yes, sir. That is within your purview.
Okay. Richard, do you have any, any comment or questions?
Yeah, I got a comment. This is an example, I think, when I worked in Cayucas, I, it was an unincorporated area, so we worked with the county, it was in the city. But part of my responsibilities had to deal with drainage. Okay, now, I, I know this is not a, the issue here, but when you, when you kick that can down the road and just don't address an issue that's brought up, and the public works, drops the ball and puts it down and kicks the can on the road, then it creates strife. And this is an example, I think, of the city's failure to address issues early on with regards to, you know, like property lines, in a lot of ways. So I think a lot of this could have been, could have been properly addressed years ago. That said, I, I feel that, you know, I, that whole area is so unique, in many facets. We got the old folks, or is it Old Folks Home or something, you know, nearby, where you got the doctors coming in. It's a dead-end road, you got fencing, you've got property lines, you've got a drainage plan that's just dumb, you know, and floods people's garages out. And I think that we, in this particular case, and I don't know the answer, maybe we can, through dialogue, have some good dialogue, come up with a solution, and it might not be like, you know, a normal solution that we have, you know, generally speaking. We might have to make some exceptions. For instance, you know, I'm sensitive to the owners having, they have a driveway up in the front, and having be able to fence that off. I would be open to that, if that could be made a space. The other thing is, is when they came in, if you do the shed, made the shed ADU, and then keep the garage, that, that wasn't an option, or was that an option originally? Or could you maybe...
No, sir, that was never an option, for, for a multitude of reasons. That it had non-conforming building separation, it was improved without the benefit of permits, is located in the setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
It had...
Lot coverage?
Lot coverage. There was a multitude of issues with putting an ADU in the existing shed.
Okay. I'm going to be interested to hear my other colleagues here, but I, I really feel that this is an example, this is really the city's fault, I think.
Jesse?
I'm not sure I understand where the barricade is going. Could we, could we see that on the map again?
Just the house, it's going to be in front of the house. It's going to be in front of the garage.
So at the, at the, at the dead end of Pico, where Pico dead ends into where their existing driveway is, to access the existing garage, so that driveway approach is to be removed. And they're, they're proposing to have a fence go along in front of the existing garage, the proposed accessory dwelling unit, and then have an opening on the, on the edge of the, the north side of the property, at that, in that location, that's going to be their access.
Okay.
So the parking barrier is going to go in front of the fence, right, at the, centered on the dead end of Pico. So there would be a barricade, so somebody driving down Pico doesn't go straight up into their accessory dwelling unit, as well as having a no parking sign, which much more clearly indicates prohibited parking in that location.
Okay.
I would note something here, it's probably worth mentioning, since I reached out to the police, Acting Police Chief Jody Cox. Asked him, well, what's, what's our practice when people call and complain about parking? Clearly, if somebody's parked dead end of the end of the street, that's not parked legally. Can't park perpendicular at the end of a street, you can't. It's not, you know, it's, it's against vehicle code. And so he said, well, we would go out and, you know, as long as it wasn't creating an issue, then we would typically put a warning on it, and if it happened again, we would cite them. I asked, well, so, we've heard from appellants that they've called the police many times and nothing's happened. And he did the research, and there was a complaint back in August related to car, a car parked in the street, and that's the only one. So I don't know exactly what was going on there, but there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of, and they had, and I had him search records for the subject property, and the two adjacent properties on either side were the, who are the appellants. So I'm not sure what's exactly going on there, but it doesn't seem like we've had a lot of complaints going into the police department. But he said, yeah, we would send an officer out there, we would have them, if they were blocking someone's driveway, we'd probably have them cited, potentially towed. So those are options out there that are available, and if we put the, post the notice, parking sign, I think, you know, through the conditioning of the project and through talking with the police department, how they would enforce vehicle code requirements, I think we're covered on that side of things. I can't get into the whole situation that you just all explained between the two neighbors, I'm not going to try to figure that out. All I can do is tell you what the city would do in a normal circumstance when people are called out on a complaint related to somebody parked illegally. We would enforce parking requirements, vehicle code, and the police department and Acting Police Chief Jody Cox backed that up. So I don't know if that helps your decision-making process at all. That's why we added the conditions that we did, was to address the issue that they raised. Cars shouldn't be parking that way, and we think we have conditions that cover it, and we think we have adequate ability to enforce.
Okay. Are we still doing questions, or were comments, or...
Questions and comments.
Okay, so, I mean, the comments I have are, it seems like some signage would be very appropriate there. I don't know if this is possible, but signage to the effect that gives the, you know, you see it in, in parking lots, you know, if you park here, you will be towed. And, you know, if a tow truck comes up, you know, or if you, if, if the appellants were able to call the tow truck company themselves, say, there's a sign, it says, if you park here, you will be towed, you know, and collect it at Chico's, you know, tow company. That seems very appropriate. This, this whole thing seems very, seems like a symptom of a systemic problem, we're going to be seeing more and more of. But I don't see how the ADU is necessarily exacerbating, it almost seems like it's making it better by removal of the shed. That's, that's what I'm seeing. So I'm hoping that things can be better, but they were not great to begin with, so, you know, we hate, well, hate's the wrong word. I don't want to start denying ADUs, because there was an existing parking issue, when parking is not something we can really consider in an ADU. So I mean, and I'm saying that for the, for the public, and I hope we can all, you know, we can all get along, like Rodney King would say. But more so, I hope we can put some signage, the city can put some signage up and make your lives a little bit easier for everybody, so.
Richard?
I, I have a question. It's okay, just, just a question for right now, well, actually, it's two questions. If the application is approved, the existing driveway in front of that garage, will that be regraded and restored to some semblance of what it was before?
If, if the appeal is denied, is that, is that, okay. So the existing driveway approach to the existing garage will be removed in the public right-of-way. It will be to the city's satisfaction to, it will be in the public right-of-way, so it will be to the Public Services Director's satisfaction. And then in that location will be the traffic barrier.
And, and the second question is, and I, I'm not quite sure in terms of my memory, are we asking for both a fence and the barrier? And where the, where the driveway is?
No, sir.
Just the barrier?
They are, a fence is part of the submittal applicant, or a part of their project on the plans. They're showing a fence across the existing driveway and ending right before that parking spot. I don't believe these plans show a gate actually blocking the parking spot off of Pico, but there is a gate proposed off of the Greenwood parking space.
All right, so it's, it's, so assuming that there is going to be a fence on the property line, it strikes me that the city going through the considerable expense of building a barrier...
It is the applicants, it's a condition of approval on their project that they build the barrier.
Okay.
They install, pardon me, install the barrier and the no parking sign.
And this barrier would serve as a kind of a, an added publicity, that you shouldn't park there, because there's, I, I'm not quite, I'm not quite understanding how the barrier is physically preventing illegal parking, since the fence will be there too. That is not to say it, it won't help, but I, it doesn't strike me as it's essential.
So it was, the Public Works Department, it was one of their conditions of approval to require the barrier, which is standard on a dead-end street when you're accessing a residence, right, for safety purposes. In discussion with staff, we had decided that adding the specific requirement to add a no parking sign would help mitigate some of the existing parking issues.
Okay, Joan, as far as elevation on that parking spot off of Pico Street, where, where is that going to lie? Is that going to be at the higher level, or is that going to be at the street level? Is there going to be a transition up to it? What's the grading? I never got a grading plan or anything like that.
That is a really good question. I know that the existing finished floor elevations of the garage, the existing garage and the proposed accessory dwelling unit and the shed are, they're at the same elevation. shed are, they're at the same elevation. So I believe it is a rise up to that parking space.
Okay. Can, if we require that to be at street level, that may solve some of the drainage issues of bringing, bringing the drainage down into the parking area, and then out into the street face.
Yes, sir.
So, I would like to look into that. Also, you know, I just have, I just have to say for the neighborhood, and I hope, I hope you guys can get beyond this, there's nothing worse than, than strife and stress in your home. So, I'm really, you know, really cognitive of that, and I, and I, I just wish there was some, you know, I hope that what we bring, bring through here will help ease this a little bit. So, yes, please.
I apologize. I think I was mistaken. It is not exactly at the same elevation, it is a bit lower.
Okay.
Existing right now. The shed finished floor is a foot.
So, in looking, in looking at it, you go up into the, you go, it looks like you go up to the driveway and go into the garage, the shed looks like it's down further, and they would have to, you know, they have to grade to get flat in there, so it'll be, it'll be lower.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be flatter going into that than it would be, it won't be the same slope as the driveway that's created to get you into the garage.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay. But it did seem, when I was out there, it did seem like there was an elevation change to go up to it.
Yes, sir.
I think we can condition the project so it's great, grading, we drop the elevation of the parking area, so that the, the drainage goes through the parking area and onto the street end. I think we can eliminate some of the cross drainage onto the other properties that way. The other, the other thing, I think Jesse's suggestion of, if you park here, you'll be towed, or worse, is a great, you know, is a great addition to the signage, that you can call Chuck's Towing, anybody could call Chuck's Towing, anybody that's parked there.
Our municipal code doesn't have a policy that would allow for that.
Oh, okay.
But, but the police department can tow vehicles. So if it was there blocking a driveway, the police department could have the vehicle towed.
And Scott, why hasn't this been a code enforcement issue, instead of a police issue?
It was a code enforcement issue back in 2012, is, that's before I got here, so there's correspondence in there from the then Public Services Director, Rob Wleyvik, to them, telling them that they're violating the Morbey Municipal Code and the Streets and Highways Code by parking perpendicular to the end of the street. I don't know what the follow-up was, is unclear to me. I'm not sure where that went. Again, a little unclear. But I'm comfortable moving forward now that I know we have a process, we can clearly define what is allowed and what is not allowed, and we have the ability to cite, and we have the ability to tow. So, I think, put the signage up, absolutely. Can't park there, people violate that, we have the ability to warn them, cite them, tow them.
Okay, great. And I think that's the, the appropriate methodology to solve some of this aggravation. As far as the, as far as the gates across the driveway, I think I made myself clear. For one, for one thing, either you're opening it out into the public, public right-of-way, and that's, shouldn't be allowed, and the other, if you swing the gates in, you're not gonna be able to park a car there. So, there's, they can easily cross fence that, and, and to, to allow their, you know, protection for their dogs, they can bring a vertical fence line back to the, to the house with a gate on the side. So I see that not, as not a, you know, an undue burden for, for you. And we've made, made it perfectly clear that we do not, we are not going to allow gates on driveways, and I think we need to be consistent with that. That's my point of view on that. So, okay.
Are you talking about in the, on Greenwood's side?
On Greenwood's side.
And you, you, you don't even think of sliding to?
No. No, we're not allowed that on other properties, I don't see why we should allow it on this one.
If I may, I agree with the chair, I think that's a bad idea. I think consistency is, is key there.
Okay, thank you.
I think I, I think I should respond, since I, I raised this issue. I'm gonna respond since I, I raised that issue. And despite my, my affection for picket fences, I realize that I have an even stronger affection for observing city law and precedent, and my absolute insistence that at least two parking spaces be available for a given residence. So, I'm rethinking that issue, I think I'm in favor of the fence being relocated in such a way that there's access to the driveway as well.
Okay. So, I think we can condition this with the barrier and the no parking, and the no parking sign, which is required. And I, you know, and how do you guys feel about regrading that parking spot off of Pico to allow, to try to clean up that grading, the drainage issue? Michael, you're pondering?
Yeah, I, I actually, you know, I floated that question before, because I think it's really counterintuitive to have a major home without two parking spaces off the main face.
Yeah.
And I'd almost rather see the Pico one lapsed and two parking spaces off Greenwood. Because I think what it says then is the accessory dwelling unit finds its place to park somewhere on the street, as it always has, and the two for the main house are where the people entering the main house would enter the main house, which is what the code typically does. I think this is a classic case of a little too much zeal and pro-development that just about anything that got brought in got approved, and without any real look or care for the potential impact on the neighbors. And I, I think the, the pictures I see of the, the so-called garage, I have no concept of how they build this into an accessory dwelling unit to code. But that's a permit life safety issue. But I, I really think it's, when I looked at the site, and I see the people on Greenwood all access the houses from Greenwood with garages and things like that, I, I just think the Pico parking space is gonna continue the issue.
Okay, that's a good, good point for discussion. Now, Joseph, please.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, I think I would, I would agree with that. If for no other reason than, you know, because the problem at, at its core is one of observing parking regulations, followed by enforced consequences for not observing the regulations, I'm, I'm not confident at all that anything we do here today is gonna in any way cure the problem by itself. It requires people to know what the parking restrictions are and observe them. And Commissioner Michael's suggestion is an alternative way that sort of circumvents that nasty problem in the back, where there's, at, at core, there are not enough parking spaces for all the people who need cars to be parked there. So, it's a way of circumventing that by putting parking out in front. I think that's a pretty commonsensical and practical solution.
Jesse?
Well, speaking to the drainage, it seems like the drainage is a bigger problem of the entire street. I would hate to burden the, the property owners, you know, the applicants with any kind of stormwater retention type situation. I, I just don't know, besides building little curbs all around the entire cul-de-sac, or whatever you want, the dead end there, I don't know how to fix that. And it seems like maybe we, the city dropped the ball on a different project and allowed the drainage to, to get there, to be, or to get the water to be, get there to begin with, which is a bigger issue, it's not at, at hand. So, I don't know where I was going with that, but.
What about the parking, front or back?
I think I could go either way.
Okay. Richard?
Okay, to be crystal clear, what, what you're saying, Michael, is where the shed is now, no, oh, okay, that's okay. Where the shed is now, we, we have the fence go all the way across completely, in the back. And the front on Greenwood, the opening gate has to be removed, and two outdoor parking space on the front. Is that correct? I think that this is a, a good idea, given the situation that we're presented with.
Okay. My only issue on that is we're, you know, but we're gonna be seeing this on multiple other houses, is we're gonna have cars parked in the front, front yards, where we should have porches and, you know, you know, intermediate semi-public spaces. But in this instance, I, I concur with, with Michael that I think that solves an issue. And then the, the site drainage and the street drainage should almost be a, a city engineering solution with an invert and a connection to the, to the, to the stormwater system. But, so where, so Scott, where are we with, who's responsible for this, for, for sheet drainage going into somebody else's garage?
This property and this project is not causing drainage issues. So, we're nowhere with regard to that. There are drainage issues that exist over there because the street is not improved. There's not curbs, there's not driveway, regular driveway approaches. So, that's an existing situation. All of those people over there are responsible for those. Not necessarily the city. We can talk to the Public Works Department about whether there's something that can be done over there, but the drainage is where the drainage is. And so, I'm not so sure that there's a plan moving forward to fix any of that at this point. Short of having the individual homeowners propose solutions that put in features to address the drainage. We'd have to talk to Public Works about that. If you wanted to move forward and change the location of the parking space, you know, from accessing Pico and require it to be in the front, we would have to change the resolution, continue the project, continue this to bring it back to you, probably with a redesigned project that shows that. And the resolution would be changed, because this resolution denies the appeal.
Correct.
You'd be upholding the appeal, and directing change. And that would have to come back to you.
On the director's approval of the, the original permit?
Correct. Yeah, so, the resolution you have before you doesn't do what you're asking it to do, it just recommends denial of the appeal. If you change it and put the parking in the front, we'd be upholding at least a portion of the appeal to relocate parking, which is fine, not a problem. We just have to, we have to bring that, this back, and probably with the revised project, since you'd be directing the change, and so you'd have to see that. And we could also talk to Public Works a little bit about what is, what is in the realm of possible, versus having me and a planner figure that out here at the meeting.
I think, I think this, I think this project would, would, would benefit from having more scrutiny from Public Works.
They've given it lots of scrutiny. Yeah. So anyway, but I mean, I see what you're saying. I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
Yeah. So, okay, so where do we wanna go with this, guys? And we all, Joseph?
I, I favor the two spaces in front. However, you know, I'm also thinking of the, you know, the rights of the, of the property owner, and they, this is a difficult one, because we're, they, they're willing to create a parking space in the back of their property so that they don't have two parking spaces in the front, and they're willing to do it in such a way that they think it'll avoid parking problems in the future. And if we decide, no, they can't do that, we're, we're deciding in advance that their effort is destined to fail. And I don't know if that's a good approach to take, to sort of decide for them. I need, I'm gonna think, I'm thinking about this just a little bit more.
Okay, Jesse?
I'm kinda leaning towards what Commissioner Graffy is saying. If we have access, legal access to the rear, and they, the applicant chooses to put their parking back there, I'm not wanting, willing is one thing, wanting to deny the appeal, I'm sorry, uphold the appeal. I'm, if that's what they choose, and they have legal access to do that, I, I don't want to be the one to tell them they cannot.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I, I think it's a really dense, almost urban kind of situation. And, you know, again, I would just say that we don't have to provide space for the accessory dwelling unit on-site. So, the spaces that are shown on-site are for the house. And so what we're doing is perpetuating an issue where the dwelling, the occupants of the main house are parking in front and in back. And I just think that's, sounds to me like where some of the issues arose in the first place. And the dominant pattern on Greenwood is to park off of Greenwood, everywhere else.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you were saying, Jerry, about not wanting cars in front and porches and stuff. But, once again, this situation is quite unique, especially exacerbated by doctors' visits and everything else with the neighbor, the neighboring area. And, and that's why I, I, I agree. I, I think that we should put a fence across the back and have the parking in the front of the house.
Okay.
What's your suggestion?
I'd like to hear a motion. You know, I'd like to hear this codified.
I would, I would note that moving the parking space to Greenwood doesn't alleviate the issue. People are parking cars in the right-of-way here.
Right.
That's the issue. It'd be, it would be less trips, though, less traffic. So there is that. You wouldn't have cars, as many, I mean, I guess theoretically you wouldn't have the car, whatever car was gonna utilize that space coming and going all the time. But again, this, moving it to the front doesn't alleviate the issue of parking in the street. You mean, really, that's what the signage enforcement's gonna do, and the signage enforcement's going to do that regardless of whether there's a parking space there or not at the back.
I tend to agree. I mean, I'm sorry, Richard, go ahead.
I mean, not that, I mean, if you wanna move it to the front, that's fine, I'm just saying I, I don't see it as, as really resolving that issue.
Jesse, go ahead, Jesse, first.
I mean, okay, practically speaking, whether or not the Coles do this, or whether or not the next owners do this, I mean, it seems that whoever occupies that accessory dwelling unit in the rear is gonna access from the rear. They're not gonna be walking, assuming it's a different family, they're not gonna be walking through the Coles property, or the Coles sidewalk to get to the rear of the property. They're gonna park in the back anyway.
They can have a pedestrian gate in the rear fence.
I'm sorry?
They, they can put a pedestrian fence, or a pedestrian gate on the rear fence.
Right. But what I'm saying is that doesn't alleviate, it's not gonna stop somebody from parking in the back. And if you put a parking spot in the back, I mean, it would, it would encourage, it would discourage illegal parking, I would think. And that's been, that's been the, the problem.
You know, Scott, I, I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with you as far as what you, the way you see it. I think that by having a fence clean across there, it's gonna make it a no-brainer. When you have a parking space there, it may give the, a impression that, oh, you know, it's cool, you could just kinda park here for a little bit, you know, even though you have your markings. And I think that the pedestrian gate might be a good idea.
Yeah, what that will do is it'll put somebody parking in the back without a parking spot, and further impacting the street on Pico. So, I, you know, we're trying to redesign this project on an appeal, and we really don't even have the full-scale plans of the proposed project to work from. I don't, okay, it's, I think, you know, I think this needs more, more thought, and I think, I think it needs, I would like to continue the appeal, and have this, see if this can be resolved on the initial approval with a better thought-out, a better thought-out plan. So that's kinda, if it can go back to staff.
So, the planning commission, if, if you wanna continue this, you need to provide direction, okay?
Right.
So, so your choices are adopt the resolution as it is, and everything stays the way that it is. it is, because it denies the appeal. If you want to make changes to the plan, it's not a problem, completely within your authority to do so. We would be upholding the appeal then, coming back with a resolution that reflects whatever direction you gave us. If that direction is to look at options for placing parking in the front, then we would be talking to the project applicant, who's in the audience, and who you could bring up right now and ask them what they think about your ideas and what you're doing, to get their take on it. So, yeah, I mean, I think, to just continue it with not giving the direction to go, say, go do something, is probably not good. And maybe you want to give them the option. Maybe they don't want to do that, because that's their yard. And they have quite a bit of landscaping up front. Now, you'd be adding another space, so maybe you're removing most of their yard, like two-thirds of it, in the front. And maybe they're opposed to that. And so, they might want a decision out of you anyway, so they could appeal the Planning Commission's action to the City Council.
And then actually, you know, the parking spot for the ADU in the back is much more convenient and would probably be used more.
So, those are the options that I see. There may be others. Those are just what I was thinking of.
But sir, that parking space is not for the ADU. That parking space is for the single-family home.
Correct.
The ADU will be parking in the public right-of-way in some location.
Right. But in reality...
Well, therein lies Commissioner Lucas's point, I think.
Okay. I think, you know, Scott, let's do that.
Let me, let me make a motion and you can vote it up or down.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we accept the appeal and continue the project with the review of, with the, with the goal of placing the two required parking spaces off of Greenwood. Is that satisfactory for purposes right now?
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We have an appeal, we have a motion and a second. Let's, do we have a discussion on that? Who wants to start?
Well, I'm far from certain on how I should decide. So, if, if we can have more information and more time to think about it, I'm for that. So, I, that's...
So, let's, let's open up public comment again. And on, can we, can we have the original applicant for the original proposal come forward and please state your name again?
Yes, I'm Dan, and this is Deana Croll.
Okay.
If we move the two parking spots up to Greenwood, it would effectively take out our whole yard. And without a gate across the driveway, that would leave our whole yard wide open. So, I think we would probably just back out of the, this project if that was the case. So, we'd probably need to think about it a little bit more, but I think it may be a deal breaker for us to move both spaces onto the Greenwood side.
Okay.
Yeah. We just got, you know, aging parents, and we're hoping that there would be a private space for, for them eventually, and hoping that that spot could be a place for that car to go for the people in the ADU. It was our hope, because it's a little bit private. There is a little bit of a sidewalk on the side, but that was our hope. Yeah, it would, if you've been to our home, you've seen that we do a lot of landscape in front, and it would make the entire thing concrete. They also put a condition on us already to put in the handicap apron, which would make us deed over quite a few square footage of our yard to the city of Morro Bay. We are up for doing that, and it's an additional cost that's huge. We've already refinanced our house. We've put about $10,000 into the architect because we've come back and forth to the city. So, that would definitely determine, we wouldn't have enough money for that, and we don't want to have a concrete yard. I understand that they're complaining about the parking, but I just need to say to you, it is not just us. In fact, like they said, there's a lot of people living in the area, and I do not feel that one parking space in back and one in front is a bad idea. If you put two in front and make an entire yard concrete, it will not alleviate what they, what they're dealing with, with the entire community. And I hope you read the six letters that were sent to you, because they are the people that live right there, and I feel very misrepresented. I feel like the decision you're about to make right now is to totally take out something we've worked really hard on, about a year and a half on, and because of the emotion and all that. And we really wanted to get together and say, look, let's make this, let's talk about what, it's been hard to talk with them. But I would feel very much that you've been moved by emotion today to go ahead and make the plan yourself to say how the drive it could be by state law. And all the work they have done, I feel like it's proven that this is something we should be able to do. It is a very unique lot. It is a street-to-street lot, which is super amazing for us, because it's unique. We have a little bit of, you know, view, and so do they. And it just would make me really sad to think that somebody's making the plan themselves for our place, because our, our two neighbors don't want, don't want that spot, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, close the public comment.
I was going to just ask them if they would be amiable, I know that you...
Okay, please, please step forward again. I'm sorry.
If you were able to, and I know that you don't like the gates, but if you were able to gate the two, two spots in the front?
Sounds like probably the quorum here is against the gate, and I think, yeah. Some of it's cost issue also. If we get into a lot of concrete work out in front, it may price us out of the project.
It would give us no front yard, literally no front yard.
Okay. Any other questions for, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your input. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had...
Just as far as public comment, you opened it up, there's other people. I'm not going to be commenting, but I believe there's other people. Before you close public comment.
Okay, it was for a specific issue and a specific question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Then maybe, maybe the rest of the public can't speak on this. If not, that's...
Yeah, I only opened it up for a specific issue.
It's acceptable for you to open public comment, to ask questions of the applicant or anyone else and close it back up. You don't have to continue to take public comment.
Okay, okay. We, I'm, I'm sorry, but we only opened it up for a specific question for the original applicant on a design issue. So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, not going to open it up for public comment for other, other items right now. You may have a chance to speak later, but I'm closing public comment at this point. Okay. So, it's back to, it's back to the commission. And we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need more discussion, or do you want to call a vote?
I have a comment.
I would like to comment also.
You know, I'm, I'm trying to reduce this to the simplest, simplest, most simple understanding. And I keep coming back to my sympathy for not turning a whole lot of the front yard into a concrete driveway. I understand that as a homeowner. I also understand the applicant saying, we're going to create this space in the back for one of the two parking spaces, and we're going to use that. And I keep returning to the notion that the problem in the past has been one of enforcement. And somehow, I just find it unfair to, punishment is too hard a word, but to place the burden on the homeowner because whomever, and I won't say who's been violating the parking laws, but because people have been violating the parking laws. So, I just have a feeling that they should be legally, they should be entitled to do what they legally have a right to do, and whomever should suffer the consequences if the parking goes south.
I want to say that also, I want to further that thought. They have legal access. So, I mean, would we be constituting a taking?
You have, you have broad discretionary authority when it comes to discretionary applications to, to, to make changes like this as it relates to where the parking spaces can go. So, you have the authority to do it if you choose. I'll just leave it at that.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, are we opening ourselves up to a possible litigation? Because state law does allow for these ADUs to go in without parking requirements, so...
Again, this is a discretionary process, and it comes, do you want to appeal? And you do have the ability, you have some discretionary authorities that relates to this. Is it, you know, I, how much you have as it relates to the, the parking thing, I don't know, because the change in the law is relatively new. You know, I mean, laws get defined by court cases. So, we know, you don't really know what happens until, you know, you've had, you know, several different pieces of litigation go through the process, and that's usually what defines what you can, what it means and what it doesn't mean, so.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I am in favor of upholding the appeal. So...
Okay.
Denying the appeal, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. We're, on this project, you know, Michael, I see your, I see your point, but I also, I'm concerned about extra parking in the front yard. I'd rather see, I'd rather see more vegetation, and I think we have dual access. Once again, I think it was Jesse who brought up the point that the problem isn't where the parking is located. I think the problem is, is it's an enforcement issue. And I think that's, that's what's going to solve, solve the issue, is effective enforcement. And, so, I don't have a problem, I, I would have the parking both in the front and the back. And I would like to see the parking in the rear, to see where the elevations are and what the grading conditions are. So, if that can solve some of the runoff, you know, I'm not sure if it will, but I think it needs to be investigated, you know, further on the, during the building plan process.
We would be doing that anyway, as it relates to removal of the structure and grading so they can get into it. So, we'd have to, they'd have to show us all of that anyhow.
Okay. So, we have a, we have a motion, we have a, we have a second. I think we need to call a vote unless you want to, you know, rescind your motion.
I think we should vote on it.
Okay.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
No.
Commissioner Graffia?
No.
And Chairman Lur?
No.
So, the motion does not pass 3-2. Motion fails.
Correct. So, the next motion, I guess, I'll see if we can, is to accept the, you know, to accept the appeal with the conditions put forward by staff.
To, to adopt Resolution PC 31-18, denying the appeal, subject to the conditions.
Denying the appeal. Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal at CP 0-575, administrative level coastal development permit, with the conditions that signage be placed at the end of Pico, allowing, or giving greater discretion is the wrong word, giving greater authority to the PD to tow unlawfully parked vehicles at the end of Pico.
Let me just ask a question to the staff. Can there be, you know, further red zone? There's no curb, so there's no, you can't paint the curbs red, but can there be no parking signs placed on Pico?
Only under certain circumstances, and is, and is only as approved by the Public Works Director. That's what, that's the way it reads in our municipal code, or as directed by the City Council. But, you have to be careful when you're making decisions about where you can and cannot park.
Right.
There's issues related to that.
Okay. Just a question. Okay, do we have a second?
I will, I will second that.
Okay, discussion. Michael, Richard? Okay. Let's call the question on this.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Commissioner Sadowski?
No.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Lur?
Yes.
This motion passes as 3-2.
You know, I just hope that the, you know, the neighborhood can, can come together on this. And I hope that enforcement, with enhanced enforcement, we can relieve some of the strains. So, thank you, everybody, and thanks for being civil and trying to find a solution to this. Okay. Okay, I think we're going to take five at this point.
And I think you're...
We'll, we'll come back at about between, between 10 and 15 after. Okay, can we, are we live? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Welcome back to the Morro Bay Planning Commission. We're going to do something more confrontational now. We're going to talk about Module Four. So, this is item number C1. It's the Plan Morro Bay, General Plan, LCP update, the draft zoning code update, Module Four, overlay districts and citywide standards. Let me just ask one question to staff, and this may be for, for Bill. We're not going to be talking about zoning on the, in the harbor.
So, we're not going to be talking about the land use maps from the general plan update. We're, we're just talking strictly zoning today, so we won't be speaking to that, that, those issues. In fact, staff's still researching through all of that right now, the issues that he's raised. And we have, in fact, unfortunately, most of the stuff is sitting on Cindy's drafting table in her office, taking up lots of room. While we go through it, we're trying to get the finalized annexation maps, just also figure out where our boundaries are, because we're a little unclear right at the moment. So, a few things we're working on.
Okay. I think before we even go to staff, you know, presentation here, if, you know, you guys have been sitting out there, if you're, if you've come to speak to this item, I'd like to open up public, public comment on this item, so that before we get into it, if you, if you'd prefer. So, I'll open up public comment. Please come forward.
Good evening. Again, Bill Martin, Morro Bay. Yeah, it's my understanding that you're not going to be talking about the land usage. I did see where, if I understood it right, you're going to be talking about ESHA. And will you be pulling that out separately, or will public comment now be the time to talk? Other words, each section, are you going to be having public comment, or is now the time to comment?
I think now's the time to speak.
Okay, that's fair enough. And mainly, I know I spoke about ESHA in the past. The existing ESHA maps in the bay are very accurate, and I don't know why, or I'm recommending that you just leave the ESHA maps alone in the bay that show where the ESHA is south of, or just north of, you know, the Inn at Morro Bay and the ESHA designations in the bay were put there. And those are eelgrass habitat, and also flyby for the birds and that, in that area. So, rather than dropping the ESHA in the bay, I think if you just leave the existing ESHA on, in the bay itself, I think that would pretty much solve your problem. And one other comment I'll make is, and this has to do with mariculture in the bay. And when I was speaking earlier on the, the zoning that was, you know, the waterfront zoning, that will not allow mariculture in that part of the bay that's always been allowed in the past. So, that was another point that I thought I'd bring up. But other than that, it's primarily ESHA. And just, if you just leave the existing ESHA maps in the bay, that would pretty much solve your problem. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, Scott, let me, you know, come back to you about that. From what I understood, that the ESHA maps in the bay are going to be eliminated, but the entire bay is going to be considered an ESHA?
So, we do have the, and we'll get to it in the Module Four, is an ESHA overlay in here. But there's also the ESHA designation as it relates to the land use map for the general plan local coastal program, all right? And as we've talked about before, since we were removing that and trying to go to this, folks were uncomfortable with that. So, we're going to be putting back into the land use map and just identifying the areas that are also ESHA.
Okay.
We were hoping to do it through just this, the zoning code, but people sort of didn't like that a whole lot. And so, we're going to have it in both. didn't like that a whole lot and so we're going to have it in both.
And then we also talked about in a previous module about making sure that the mariculture is allowed in the harbor front.
In resolving the issue that Mr. Martin raises, we'll also fix that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I thought we had touched upon that before.
So I think, I think, I think we're on good ground there. And I think, in looking through the, the maps, we're just trying to make sure we have the most accurate and the correct ones since the city doesn't really like to stamp maps approved or identify which ones were approved in the past. We have conflict between some of them, but most of them all agree in this area, so I think we're good and solid. We just need to take one last run through it and I think we'll be good as we move into the general plan LCP update when we get back to that part of it.
Okay, because yeah, mariculture, aquaculture is something where we should be encouraging.
Exactly.
Okay.
Regarding ESHA, when we're discussing it, you're talking about on these overlays, we're going to be talking about ESHA in the bay and on land or we're just?
Correct. So we have, we have the ESHA policies in the overlay that are here and then it will be implementing the ESHA portion of our general plan and LCP, which is the area with the map that everybody's been referring to. You took this out of here, we did it on purpose because we were putting it in here, but now we just sort of have it, we're going to have it reflective in both places so people.
Don't freak out.
Yeah. Which is fine. I mean, you know, that's part of this process is to get input. People were very uncomfortable with that. Like, we don't need to make everybody uncomfortable, we can make them comfortable and we can make it happen, so that's all good.
We wouldn't want to please anybody from this point. Okay, great, let's, let's move forward.
So, so we're ready to jump back in. We had a little bit of a hiatus from zoning code stuff, but we're back. And this is the final module of the zoning code update, so Module Four, which is, which is good. So once we're done with this, we'll wrap that all up and the next time you see it, it'll all be packaged as one zoning code. Pretty exciting. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Martha.
Thank you. So yes, this is the, the last of the four modules of the preliminary draft of regulations. Then what we'll be doing next is making revisions, working with staff on that, to what you've seen in each of the modules, packaging it all together and then taking another look at it. So this, so Module Four has the overlay districts and citywide standards, citywide standards that we haven't yet discussed. So the overlay districts regulate areas where the modification of those base district standards are appropriate. So the base districts, such as the residential districts, the commercial mixed-use districts, overlay districts modify some of those standards where appropriate because of specific conditions, circumstances, or goals expressed in your general plan. So I'll go through a kind of overview of each one of the overlay districts. The first is the coastal zone overlay district, which includes information regulations that apply specifically to the coastal zone. So virtually all of Morro Bay is within the coastal zone, except one small section, really almost just a parcel. But we included the overlay to highlight the need for a coastal development permit. So what we heard when, at the beginning of the process, when we talked to staff and stakeholders, was that it wasn't totally clear that a coastal development permit was required, that there needed to be something else to really like tip that off and flag that. So that's one of the reasons why it's presented as an overlay district, so it, it highlights that. But what this includes is the permit requirements where there's exclusions and exemptions to the requirement for a coastal development permit. And it also has reference to the city's local coastal program land use plan. So the requirements for how a coastal development permit is processed, you'd already seen that in administration in Module One, but this explains when a permit is required and what that process it, or, you know, when you need a coastal development permit. The second is a cultural resource protection overlay district. This is a new overlay district and it's really provisioned for the protection of archaeological, historic, and paleontological resources. So it really requires new development to, you know, avoid impacts. It requires a preliminary site survey where there's a sensitive area and then a mitigation plan and then if cultural resources were discovered, that there needs to be a plan for that as well. So the next is the environmentally sensitive habitat overlay district. We will be revising the applicability section so that it, it's clear in referencing the appropriate maps. But this overlay applies to areas that are identified as environmentally sensitive habitat areas, as well as those within 100 feet of habitat area where there's evidence that there may be presence of ESHA. So in coastal's terms, this applies to mapped and unmapped ESHA. So while the maps are important and they help us identify, they provide those clues based on the studies that we have, but just to make it clear, ESHA does, this applies even if it, they're sensitive habitat, but it wasn't, wasn't mapped. So it contains standards for the protection of habitat types in Morro Bay as well as where possible, specific mitigation measures are identified. And that's where typically either those typical mitigation measures are applied to that habitat, either through citywide regular processes, best, best practices for habitat protection, or what coastal commission will typically require for mitigation. So where possible, it's included. That's not always the case, so always mitigation is really based on site-by-site circumstances and study. The next is the mixed-use residential overlay district and this implements the mixed-use, the mixed-use districts in the general plan. And it's really intended to allow additional opportunities for residential development in certain districts, namely the VSC, the visitor-serving commercial, and the NC, the neighborhood commercial district. So it really implements what's in the general plan as far as residential and mixed-use development in those areas. The waterfront master plan overlay district is a new chapter. It really provides that cross-reference to the waterfront master plan, requiring consistency for areas within that overlay district. And then the planned development overlay district really revises and reformat's what's in your existing code. So Morro Bay is unique in how the planned development district is both applied and administered. So right now, it really is proactively applied, so something's proactively in the planned development district and it requires concept plan and precise plan reviewed by the planning commission and city council. It's kind of this additional level of review. That is really unique to Morro Bay. So what planned development districts typically are, are a planning tool to allow a degree of flexibility, where someone is proposing something that may have additional community benefits, typically larger integrated development where they're asking for a modification to standards or a tailoring of standards. And this, it gives the city the ability to weigh the benefit that may be provided that isn't able to be achieved under conventional zoning or applying the conventional zoning standards. So throughout the process, we were looking at where the existing PD development, PD designation applies and where that, that additional review process, you know, needed to be or was it being addressed by other types of processes, such as the conditional use permit process? And with that and your design review process, with those other mechanisms for review, then this PD process can go more towards that traditional planned development approach and as a tool that most communities use it for. So that's one area that's really revised and reformatted from your existing zoning code. So next is the citywide regulations and these are regulations that imply, apply to all districts throughout the city unless specifically stated and include requirements for special regulatory programs. So this includes a number of chapters. One of them that's included in the complete zoning code, which would be included in citywide standards, is general site regulations. You've already reviewed that in Module Two. So we already discussed that. What this includes is your affordable housing density bonus and other incentives. And this really carries forward your existing provisions for inclusionary housing, in lieu fees for affordable housing, and requirements for an affordable housing agreement. What it also does is include density bonus provisions consistent with state law. Hazards and shoreline protection, these are standards for development within hazard areas, such as those with coastal hazards, geologic hazards, fire hazard areas. It also includes the provisions for shoreline protection. And this is really primarily driven by consistency with the coastal act and what coastal commission expects and looks for through standards and regulations for shoreline protection. Basically, it's not, it's not allowed for new development, it's a, a very high bar and onerous process for existing development as well. So the main theme is they don't want to see it. One change to that, which has just been occurring as these have been updated throughout the state, is taking into account sea level rise. So the landscaping section applies, landscaping provisions that apply to all new development. This section is updated consistent with the state water, state's model water efficiency, landscape ordinance. So that, or model ordinance is quite complicated in showing that your maximum applied water that you're going to use for your landscaping or your estimated water use is going to be less than the maximum allowed and it has some calculations to it. We've updated these ordinances in a number of jurisdictions and based them on if you use certain landscape or plant types with low water use, drought tolerant, we know that if you're using all of those types of plant materials, you will, your estimated water use will be below your maximum. So we've included those options so that not everybody has to do that calculation. You don't need to do a calculation if you just provide all drought tolerant plans. However, if you want to have some creativity with your landscaping options and want to be able to have different plant types with different water uses, there's the avenue to do that. The thing is, you just have to go through that calculation to prove that your water use is going to be less than your maximum allowed. So the idea is to allow, one, an easy way to comply and then, two, a flexible way to, you know, offer, if somebody wanted, to be creative with that. Non-conforming provisions, so this is for the provisions that apply to non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. It carries forward a lot of the year existing provisions with some new provisions to allow for flexibility. So one thing that we heard in talking to stakeholders and staff in the beginning of the process was, one of the things that people really valued about Morro Bay was how kind of funky it was, you know, and, and how they wanted to see more of a keeping of what was there rather than always scraping and building brand new. But one of the reasons people were scraping and building brand new is because the existing development is non-conforming for some reason or another and your non-conforming provisions were very limited in what you could do. For example, there was a limitation of 25%. Well, if I'm a small 800 square foot old little beach shack, 25% is quite small and I may have a growing family, you know, at what point do I get to where, you know, it just makes sense for me to tear that down and rebuild. So we looked at getting rid of that limitation and you can add on to a non-conforming structure provided that addition conforms. So whatever you're adding on, that needs to conform, but if you have some area that is already non-conforming, that could stay. For example, if you had a non-conforming front setback, you could add on in the back and leave that non-conforming front setback. So the idea is to provide some flexibility in, really in hopes that that provides that incentive or makes it possible to maintain kind of the funky existing structures and build from there. So the next section is parking and loading and there's quite a number of changes to this section. So one is that, when there is a, first of, there's the applicability section. And so it's easy with new land uses and new buildings, so parking needs to be provided accordance with this section when something's new. However, when there's a reconstruction or expansion or a change in use, different provisions apply. So this includes an exception for commercial uses, which right now is, I understand, just allowed in the North Main area where commercial, additional parking spaces are not required for a change of use from one commercial use to another. So right now, that just applies in the North Main area. This includes it for citywide. And the reason for that is to try and incentivize and allow for the, streamline the changing of use. And in some cases, you're looking at a change from a less intense to a more intense use, retail to restaurant, for example. But the idea is to help incentivize that and allow for that to happen. The required number of parking spaces have been revised in a number of ways. One is onsite parking is not required in the waterfront district. That was an area where there were a number of different policies and mechanisms of parking credits and calculating when parking had been provided, at what time and in what stage. And then end result of all those conversations about that and all those policies really was that no parking was being required in the waterfront area. So rather than go through that process, have people try and calculate things, provide evidence and so on, if the conclusion was always that onsite parking was not required, let's just make that a standard, make it clear and save everybody some time with that. Overall, the rest of the parking requirements were modified generally looking at reducing the amount of required parking, but also making the required parking consistent among uses. So you'll see from the table that for a lot of groups, so say, public and semi-public uses, it's one space per 250 square feet of floor area, except for certain uses that are listed that have different parking requirements. But all other public and semi-public uses have the same parking requirement. And that's again to help kind of streamline administration. So rather than having to say, oh, I went from one use to another that has a different parking rate, I'm at one space per 250, that's one space per 300, now I can't do it. We looked at grouping uses that were generally similar, give them the same parking rate and allow for as uses change over time, to be easier to facilitate that. Another difference that I think is kind of, some discussions earlier may kind of weigh in on opinions there. For residential, for single-family residential, currently you have two covered spaces required. When we went to the planning commission, we talked about having two spaces required, but they only had to be covered on lots greater than 4,000 square feet. Because one thing we also heard was that, you know, on these small lots, we don't want them all taken up by, by garage space and that adds to the mass and bulk, that massive and bulk appearance of the building. So on the small lot, so when staff and we brought that forward, proposed, don't, don't require to be covered on small lots, but required on larger lots. The G-PAC actually weighed in on that and had a discussion and their recommendation was, don't require it to be covered for anybody. If people want to put it in a garage, that's, that's great and it's fine, but overall, to provide more flexibility, reduce the apparent bulk and mass of buildings that just require two parking spaces for a single-family home, you don't need to require it to be covered. That's one thing you might want to, to consider as well. That's one thing you might want to consider as well. There's other new parking requirements to allow flexibility. So, parking reductions for areas near public parking facilities, near public transit, if you're providing car sharing, if there's shared parking through a review process, there could be some reduction in the number of parking spaces required. And then, there's regulations for parking area design. So, space dimensions, maneuvering aisles, striping, curbing, lighting, landscaping, and so on. So, those requirements are all laid out. There is requirements in there for electric vehicle charging stations, required in new parking lots with 10 or more parking spaces. And then, finally, there's performance standards, which really carries forward existing performance standards that you have, things such as air contaminants, glare, hazardous materials, noise. It really brings forward restrictions and performance standards for these kind of factors that can create nuisances. And that is, completes kind of that broad overview of Module Four.
Let's just go for questions or comments on the overall aspect of it first, and then we'll get into individual, we'll go through page by page. So, Michael, do you have any overview comments?
I just wanted, on the cultural resource piece, that was reviewed, do we have comments back from the Schumash and the Salinan groups on that? Are they comfortable with that?
So, they've weighed in on our cultural resources policy in the general plan of local coastal program, and I provided them the cultural resources section in the zoning code. And at the Wind Farm presentation last week, Fred was there, Fred Collins was there, and said he wants to talk to me, so he wants to meet, and he hasn't reached back out to me to set a date, and I probably maybe should reach back out to him. But he does have this, and he was going to provide comments, he just hasn't done it yet.
Joseph, you got an overview?
Mine are all specifics.
Okay. Jesse?
Might as well.
Richard, any?
Yeah. Martha, is it, is it possible to, like, when I look at, for ESHA, for instance, can we entertain expanding some of the ESHA in the bay at this point in time? What comes to my mind specifically is the causeway where the, you know, where if you take a bike ride over there and you see all the sea otters there, that is a unique area because it has kelp there, and it's a rocky, I think it's one of the only rocky spots in the thing. And so, would it be a place where, in this document, would we be able to expand ESHA?
Well, ESHA has a definition of what ESHA is, and I don't have the qualifications to identify what complies with that or not. But as far as what this will do is really reference what gets mapped on the zoning map, so the mapping that the city's doing. But then, again, it also applies to unmapped ESHA. So, if just, if something isn't mapped, but it does fall under that definition of what ESHA is, these would apply.
Okay. And then, the other question was, real quick, you mentioned, that's more specific.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Just a couple of things, you know, we're talking about overlays, and we're talking about esches, and we're talking about PD overlays and stuff, and it really would have been helpful if we had the existing maps to work from, and we didn't have that in this document. And I know we'll have it in the, when everything's combined, but it makes it, it's taking this out of context. I would have much-
We should have provided you with the map that shows the changes that's reflective of what's on here, and I think we gave it to you last time and didn't give it to you this time. All right? I apologize for that. It was, it was an omission, and I, again, apologize. But we'll make sure you get it moving forward. I don't imagine we're going to finish this tonight anyway.
Right.
Assuming there's things that after you look at the map, you're like, oh, okay, we can certainly revisit that at our next meeting. So, I wouldn't worry too much about it, and again, I apologize for the omission.
Okay. Just, the other thing, I didn't get any page numbers on my document. So, we had issues with, you know, page numbers before, and mine didn't come with any.
I'm not sure why that's the case. My previous iteration of it had page numbers on it, and I was looking at it, the one that we took through G-PAC.
Right.
Has all my notes in it. And then, this one, you're right, doesn't have page numbers on it.
Okay. So, we're going to be, I'm going to be fumbling around here.
So, I would, so I would suggest, we just do like you talked about. We go through it essentially page by page, so we're going to be in page one of the first overlay district, and we'll flip to page two, and I apologize if we have to do it that way. I don't know what happened.
Well, we've got section numbers we can work from once we get into the, the meat of it, just, probably in the final, in the final plan, we probably should have page numbers.
There'll be page numbers when we give it to you for our next meeting, when we meet. It'll have page numbers in it. Sorry.
Okay. So, we had our introduction. The other thing, too, is on, I'm going to jump ahead just to overlay district, because that was a major, it's coming up in, on the intro here, on the PD overlays. It just seemed, with my reading through that, and we'll go over it when we get specific, it just seemed like that was only for large, you know, large lots, large acreage, you know, so we'd only be looking at that in a, you know, five-acre parcel or something?
That's correct, and we have, and we have other policies, yeah, for one-half acre or larger. We have other policies in there that sort of pick up the way our current ordinance uses PDs and provides you flexibility and applicability in how you apply development standards, which is sort of how we've used it to this point. This is picking up a more traditional methodology of providing PDs, and usually, a PD overlay, you'll number them one, and you start at one, and you just keep going indefinitely. And a lot of times, there are plan development master plans or things like that, because there are four larger pieces of property, and they're to deal with specific development in an area. Our plan development policy didn't do that, and it was, again, mirrored off of some city out there that got their LCP adopted first, and everybody used it as the model. And so, there's a few coastal cities out there that have those, and it's not dissimilar to the PD policy that I had when I was in Pismo, which I thought was weird, because I came from a city that had done it traditionally, and they were numbered, and so whenever you wanted to do a new subdivision, they were like, almost always PDs, and, you know, you went to those numbers. So, it was a, it is a little bit different. But we're going to put the PD back in the more traditional vein that people are used to seeing and get rid of sort of the non-traditional way that we do it now.
Okay. So, I was trying to keep that in a larger overview rather than being specific. Okay. So, let's start with the first couple pages here. We've got, we've got the intro, and we're, she had a pretty good overlay, and then we've got integrating sustainable principles into zoning. So, do we have any issues or questions on, say, the first two pages?
The only, only thing that, the only thing that I, and I've talked about this before, is with regards to sustainability, I think that we need to change our mindset and go into restorative and restoration of, especially of ESHA. So, I don't know if the language needs to change, I just wanted to make that comment, just to make sure that we're going toward a more of a restorative than just a sustainable. It's kind of like, to me, it's like, if you have cancer, it's not a good thing, you know what I mean? You don't want it sustained. So, we need a restorative kind of mindset, especially when it comes to ESHA, and that's when we get into that section, I'll talk about it a little bit more.
And there was quite a bit of verbiage on restoration in the ESHA that I noticed, too. Okay. So, moving to 17.10, Coastal Zone Overlay District, you know, purpose applicability and coastal development permit required. Do we have any issues on that page? Okay. Moving on to the next page, 17.10.040, and down, determination of applicable coastal development permitting process. Okay. Then, challenge of determination, and the next page, we're exclusions and exemptions.
I had a couple issues with the exclusions and exemptions. It's actually 1710.0506. The one down there where it says replacement by natural disaster, so natural disaster is anything beyond like a single house fire, right? Or, so it's flood, wind, is it something like a firestorm coming through the community, things like that? I guess I'm trying to, where's, is it a single lightning strike on a house all of a sudden triggers these things, or? I guess what I'm looking at is the 10% piece, because basically what it's saying is, you carte blanche have 10% leeway to expand the house. And does that include previous maximums we would have imposed on a situation through this body or something like that? I mean, I'm assuming the 10% doesn't mean we can go past anything that's in the code per se.
I think all this is referring to is, you can replace the structure, it gives you a little bit of leeway in doing so, in case the reconfiguration of it demands that it adds square footage to make it work now versus what it did before. That would pick up changes for code requirements and things like that from a building code standpoint, or just to make the thing more functional, you know, I think is probably what it's attempting to do.
I understand that, but it just seemed to me like it was an automatic 10% without having to, I just know there's some things we've had through, come through here where we've said, this is it, we're not going to let the next iteration go past this, and then the 10% all of a sudden comes in, and it seems like now we're adding 10% to the height, so that, that's not going to happen in places that doesn't allow you to go past the maximums we have established anywhere. That's just 10% past what the existing was.
These are just the exemptions that are underneath the California Government Code section of the Coastal Act.
But a natural disaster would have to be declared disaster zone by the county or the state, right?
Well, and disaster is defined in the government code in this, and it's any situation which the force or forces which destroyed the structure to be replaced or beyond the control of its owner.
So, it could be any single lot is a disaster area under this provision.
And this is really nothing that the city has any jurisdiction over, it's pursuant to state law. So, you could take this out altogether, it would still apply, it's state law.
And so, that 10% would still?
Yep.
And my question on this, and I had this noted, if, in case it's nonconforming or would not be applicable to the present use, can it be replaced as, as was in the nonconforming configuration?
Well, under this, it requires the replacement structure to conform to all applicable existing zoning requirements for the same use, and cannot exceed the floor area height or bulk of the destroyed structure by more than 10%. I don't know that if my house was struck by lightning, I would look for this provision, because I actually think that your-
The nonconforming section.
Yeah.
You would, yeah, I mean, there's other provisions, this is, this is picking up state law, it's a good thing to have in here. But we also have the nonconforming section that talks about what you can do for nonconforming structures. You would look to that probably less than look to here, but this is available, and this is available to you folks regardless of, as Martha said, whether we put it in here or not. If we didn't have it in here, somebody could walk in and say, well, I want to do this, and we'd be like, okay.
And we had an instance where we had a structure destroyed by fire, and they put it, they put it back but didn't do a covered garage. So, essentially, would this allow that to happen again, or would they be required to have covered parking?
They would be required, because you have to conform to applicable existing zoning requirements.
Or in the instance of the code, the way that it's written now, no, you wouldn't be required to have the garage.
Right.
We're not there yet.
We're beyond the control of the owner, you know, don't leave your pot, you know, cooking on the stove. That's, that's within your control, you know.
So, and then also on that same category, the one page earlier, the category exclusions, is that, is the category exclusion, is that a change to, to what we had in a previous code, or is that, is that what's carried forward on item number A?
So, this is carried forward. This is one area where the city could ask for other things to be categorically excluded. There is a process that you, kind of an application process that you go through with the Coastal Commission for that. So, this is your existing carried forward. If the city wanted to pursue including other things under this exclusion, that could, there's a process for it.
Okay. But right now, coastal development permits are required on single-family homes, aren't they? What?
Okay. So, as written, it's not in our current code. That says, construction or demolition of an existing single-family home is exempt from coastal requirements, because we do require that. But there is language in our current code that says, unless the director applies for an exemption from Coastal Commission, which is the process that Martha just explained, and the city, when we adopted our current zoning code in the 90s, we never went through that process. So, it, I think, was something that was always on the city's to-do list, and this remedies that. It basically speaks to what we said we were going to do in our current code. That makes sense.
Okay. So, single, from this point moving forward, a single-family home of residence would not be required to have a coastal development permit.
Right. And there may be instances where it would require a use permit depending on location, but currently, you know, like the Greenwood home, you know, well, that's not a good example, but vacant lot, build a home, it's an admin CDP normally.
And you're in the cube, and everything's in the box, you wouldn't be required.
Yeah, yeah.
And the area, and that wouldn't be the case, likely, it won't be the case in the appeal, in the appeal zone as well. Those would still require to go to planning.
So, how does the planning, excuse me, but this is kind of, you know, I think, I think we need to dwell on this a minute, you know, because this will be a major change from what we're doing now. Right now, we're picking up all the planning issues on single-family homes in the coastal development permit process. So, if it comes in, would it go straight to building permit?
No, we have the other permitting section, it's in the other, yeah, it's the design review section, right? What's it? We picked, so, we had, we had an issue, and the issue is what you just expressed, is right now, you can provide an application for a conforming addition to a house, and if everything's conforming, and it's fine, you can submit it to building. And then, we only review it, planning only reviews it out of that process. That's when they have all their structural's done. That's, that's bad, because what happens is, a lot of times, there's issues with it, they think it's okay, and if they haven't talked to us, then it's, it can be a problem. So, we have the other, like, architectural review section that'll be required now that you'll have to get that permit upfront. It's an administrative process, so that we can go through that vetting, and I think there's, and I think there's the noticing that goes, I think we're doing noticing with that, too. Do you recall?
I have to.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember. I have to go back and look at it now. But I think we were doing noticing for that, too.
But the way number one is written, it seems to me that at some point, staff is going to have to still provide a statement that, in their opinion, there is no adverse environmental effect of that piece that's being proposed. So, that that's the point at which somebody could contest that, once that statement's made, if they wanted to appeal that decision.
So, and they'll be able to appeal our decision at the, at the staff level through the architectural review process that we would go through, too. All of, I mean, that was to pick up the things that we're just going straight to building, and that's also picks up these things that are conforming. Somebody's providing something that's conforming, we need to go through our, we want a, we want a process that we can look at and say, yeah, it's okay, before they get to the building. So, we don't have the issue, hey, it's not compliant with the city's design guidelines. So, we don't have the issue, hey, it's not compliant with the city's design guidelines. Right?
Scott, so it says, the requirements of this code for, on item A. The, let's see, so it says, requirements of this code, provided the development does not constitute an appealable development. Okay, so, I kind of read that as that if it ticked the boxes, it couldn't be appealed. Is that, did I read that wrong?
It reads that way unless you read California, unless you read the California Government Codes section that it speaks to. And that speaks to, I think, the appealable jurisdiction for the Coastal Commission. So, we could actually be more explicit that way, though. So, we could, we could say that's what this section is as opposed to somebody needing to know what the California Government Code says.
Yeah, because that confused me. So, what is the process that's going to be brought forward here? As far as, I, you know, I show up at the desk with a, you know, with a bunch of drawings on a brown paper sack and say, this is the house I want to build, or this is the addition I want to do to my, to my property. It fits in with the setbacks and the guidelines and I'm inside the cube. What is the permitting process from that point forward?
You'll be coming in and get a plan, you'll be getting an administrative planning permit for it.
Okay, so...
It'll be like an architectural review type permit or something along those lines. To make sure that you're compliant with our development standards, design guidelines, that type of stuff. And it's picked up through another permitting section in the code, not located in module four.
Okay.
And we put it in purposefully to alleviate the issue that things were going to the, going into building. Oftentimes, two-story development was going there for additions. And our code didn't have us, have the ability to do much with it, other than like, yeah, it meets the setback requirements. Cool. And so, we wanted to, so we incorporated it in here so that didn't happen. So, they had to go through a regular process. It's a short review process, though, because it goes through staff. So, it's faster and hopefully folks are talking to us upfront, so it's much faster. But that was the idea before it. So, we didn't have these things just going straight to building. That was the idea.
Yeah, it just seemed like we, I don't want to belabor the point, but it seemed like the CDP was the coastal development permit was where everything got picked up. And now, we're exempting, you know, residential, so...
So, we have another process for it?
We got another process. Okay, good, good. Okay, any other questions on that, guys?
You know, just kind of bouncing off what Michael was saying about the natural disasters thing. Is that, does that address, like, the difference between, like, armoring and safeguarding? Or is that something that goes to coastal? Like, if you, if you had some issue, like, well, like, Mr. Martin needs property or whatever, like, that area, and it got earthquake damage or whatever, is it something that he, that a person's going to have to address and try to justify a safeguarding of, to protect their property as opposed to the armoring part?
So, at the current moment, we're having, the Coastal Commission's reviewing our administrative draft of Plan Morro Bay, which is general plan local coastal program, not zoning code.
Oh, okay.
Although, we just sent this to them too. And I'm expecting to get comments back from them related to how we worded the policy related to things like seawalls in the harbor, right? A seawall in the harbor is a whole different thing than a seawall that's on a bluff. We don't really have bluffs other than that. But if we had them, like Pismo has, they don't want seawalls, right? You know, they want the bluff to retreat naturally, right? And so, all the policies are meant, driven and designed so that you don't armor the coast. Because there's negative effects to that, so they don't favor that. All those policies related to armoring the coast are still in here. But we're differentiating between what's, we're coming up with policies, differentiating between what's in the bay and what's not, because they're okay with us maintaining the harbor. Harbor's important. They understand that. And so, we'll be, I'll be curious to see what language they come back with as it relates to that. Because they said, we need to do something different. We can't apply regular, like, bluff standards to the harbor because that wouldn't allow you to maintain the revetments and things like that, that you need to have a harbor. So, but we do have those policies in here. We have policies in the S section that deals with, is that what it is? Oh, the hazard section? Okay. Oh, the hazards and sewer line protection section. That deals with all of the seawall requirements, the bluff development that we don't have. I mean, and we wrote our bluff sections to deal with actual bluffs, meaning bluffs that are subject to wave action. Not bluffs that are in town elsewhere that have fill in place in front of them in our entire embargadero. Applying bluff standards that are meant to be applied to ocean-fronting bluffs to those don't make any sense. And so, we told Coastal we weren't doing that anymore. And they largely seemed okay. We'll see what happens when they take a look at our written policy, though. We still have them, though, in case someone determines that something else out there is a bluff. I don't know what that would be, but they could. And we have the policies in place to alleviate that. But we're differentiating between...
There are a handful of beachfront properties on the north end of town that are...
Of the north point.
And I'm thinking where that one creek comes down that went through one of our properties that we had.
And these apply to all of those. So, as sea level rises and you might get erosion on those bluffs, they, you know, the revetment policies would apply. As does the, you know, this portion of the highway, you know, Highway one that's north of that also has revetment in front of it now. It would apply to that as well.
Scott, we also have a situation, this may be picking nits here, but we've got a situation where we have a bluff at, it's, you know, by the Oyster Shell Beach there, which actually is exposed to wind wave action. So, where does that fit in into this? Because what I saw in the S era was it was all relegated to wave action was our determining factor. So, where does wind wave action in the harbor count? Especially up against a bluff?
That's what I'm saying. It'll be interesting to see what Coastal sends back to us on some of this. Because they said we need to differentiate. We asked them how, and they were like, hmm, we have to think about that. I was like, well, you have other harbors. Sure, this isn't the first time someone asked. So, I'm expecting to get something back from them as it relates to that. And we'll have a little bit better idea there. But otherwise, we've been trying to differentiate between the two because applying bluff policies where the bluff used to be doesn't really make any sense. I mean, you can have slope protection policies if you want, because you have, we have slopes in other areas of town, right? I mean, we have, you know, it's fine to do that, but calling them bluffs and applying things that apply to things that have wave action, you know, in, like, other areas like Pismo has doesn't make sense to me. And kind of Coastal sort of agreed, and so, we'll see where that goes.
And not to beat a, I don't want to say dead horse, that's a wrong analogy. But, I mean, we have Morro Creek coming through by the existing sewer plant. And we have the, you know, when they put the bridge in, they, for cultural resource and other reasons, they really put the supports pretty far away. So, if that channel gets recut somehow through some natural disaster, we're still not coming in to bulkhead it or put it in its original position. It basically, we're just responding to let it go where it's going to go.
That's the idea. Yeah, I mean, you could see us having to move structures or rebuild them or take them out even, I mean...
I'm not saying worst-case scenario, but it's like the trailer park at the base of Morro Creek as well. If that would flood somehow, we're not going to be allowing some way to go back and retrace and line the creek with...
The policies here allow you to do those things. It's just you have to meet the criteria that are in them. So, if you qualified for one of those things, you could put them in. I mean, we're not on that section right now, and maybe we're getting far afield at this point. But it does allow you to do it. You just have to meet the criteria. You have to be like, okay, you know, and it also would apply to new development in those locations. And you have to take a look at what the scenarios are related to. And it talks about erosion rates and those types of things in those areas. And you have to follow those requirements when you're developing in those areas. Under certain circumstances, it might be okay to protect private property. I mean, in certain circumstances, it's acceptable.
So, in theory, there could be some butting of heads of property rights to rebuild versus what the environmental conditions were relative to some of these larger ideas of non-building the revetments and things like that?
We're trying as best we can, you know, not to put in revetments. But you need policies, in certain circumstances, something could happen, you know, that's dramatic and it might warrant it. You know, you see those in situations where you're trying to protect highways and things like that. I mean, they still want you to do, you know, adaptively move your infrastructure over time. But you have situations where roads can collapse or it could be in danger of collapsing, and you have sewer lines in them and things like that. And the environmental impact of not protecting those facilities can far outweigh the, you know, the impact from putting in some hardened facilities. So, it's a trade-off, I mean, oftentimes.
Okay, so, let's move on to temporary event exemption on the next page, item number eight. A through. There's, you know, on A two, you know, I've got the limited duration. So, what happens with something that's recurring on an annual basis? Is that a limited duration? Is that an exemption allowed? Or is that, say, like, the Harbor Festival or something? That's recurring on an annual basis, but it's a limited duration. Where does that fit into?
So, we issue temporary permits now for things that, they don't require a coastal development permit. We have special area use permits, which is where events like the Harbor Festival happens. But then, we issue temporary use permits to, like, Giovanni. Because when he has the Harbor Festival, he has his own little thing over there that has, like, you know, the little vendors and stuff in there. And so, he gets a TUP for the timeframe that that's going on. He comes in and gets those. And he does that a few times a year. And so, we issue him temporary use permits for those. Usually corresponding to other events that are happening in the city, he sort of plays off those. I mean, so, that's what they're for. That's kind of what these temporary event exemptions mean.
But if they're recurring, shouldn't they be required to do a CDP? Or shouldn't they be required to get a permit?
They're exempted by, this is state law. They're exempted by state law. And then, we have, what all those things, we have a process that picks those things up. So, that not only do this, we have a permitting process that you go through to do that. We have temporary use permits, and that's in a different section as well. That you've already looked at.
Okay, so, Scott, on this section here, you know, we do like Easter at the Rock, you know? Okay, so, that's a recurring event, I think. But then, recently, there was an event that was, had a security guard and everything else. And there was a car situation there or something. That was, it was private.
No, was that the, was that when we opened up Highway one?
Uh...
And they brought the old cars up the highway? And they had an event right there?
Maybe, but there was some kind of a special event.
There was also a film. They were filming something.
No, no, this was an event, and then we went there. But it was like, there was a security guard, and it was privatized, you know? It was a private, it was by invite only.
I think, I think it could have been any number of things, because we issue, you know, public area use permits. I think what it was, because the most recent one we has, when we opened up Highway one, they had a whole event based on the, you know, tourism board for the state of California. And then, all the local ones got together, and it was all this entire event going, you know, all the way down Highway one, from up above where the closure was to down here. I think it came, you know...
All these fancy cars, but it was, it was private, though, right?
That was public-private. There was a component of it that was public and a component that was private. But you're allowed to have public area use permits for private events. You can have a wedding out there.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, I got it, I got it.
And you've seen weddings out there before, I'm sure.
And I would just add, it's not saying that we're not requiring permits. They would, they would get picked up under the TUP process or the public area use process. We're just saying you don't need a CDP for that.
Okay.
You know, maybe annual recurring event, but you do need a use permit of some sort.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving, moving on to, let's see, we've got the next page, other exemptions and special circumstances. The next page is record of category exclusion determination. And then, we're moving on to seventeen point one zero point zero six zero. Development within coastal commission permit jurisdiction. We've got concept plans, coastal development permit, conformance review. Okay, now, we get into chapter seventeen point one one, cultural resource protection overlay district.
One thing I wanted to know is the, there isn't a definition section in zoning? Where is the difference between archaeologically sensitive, paleontological sensitive, and cultural resources? Where do they have those definitions that somebody would be able to pick them up?
So, those are really defined in your LCP and the environmental work done for that. And this section was actually, will need to be updated. There are no paleontologically sensitive areas in Morro Bay. And that was discovered as we, you know, went through the environmental review process. But for archaeologically and culturally sensitive, if they, I know we included definitions in a previous module. We double-checked that to make sure they're in, and if they're not, we will add them.
Because the one thing that concerns me is I know it was an issue with, you know, Eagle Rock, Cerito Peak, is there are active sites. So, that's not archaeological so much as it is cultural resource, if something's an active site. So, I think this is fascinating. I think if the indigenous people sign on to this section, I think it's a fantastic thing because it's, this is a burden a lot of people have been totally unaware of in our area because they're not informed. And it'll save people a lot of headaches because they'll know upfront.
I mean, the good part is that they've been willing to engage with us and given us input, at least on the general plan LCP side of things, about changes they wanted to see us make. And so, we've, we're in the process of putting that together. So, it's been a good, you know, collaborative process. And it was great that Fred Collins, out of the Northern Chuma tribal council, you know, when he saw me at the event last week, he was just like, yeah, we need to meet and talk about the next step. And I was like, absolutely. So, I mean, that was good. He was excited that we were, you know, from a city standpoint, engaging with him. So, he was, he's been very happy about that. And, I mean, you want to have that experience with our, you know, with the local tribes for sure, the representatives from the local tribes, so.
So, previously, all this has been, you know, private party gets, you know, ambushed by this when they come through, and all of a sudden, there's a cultural resource that they have to deal with, you know, on certain sites, because there wasn't any way to, you know, to pre-survey. Will these be mapped overlays or were these still?
We have maps. And have we given you the zoning code? The map is on there, you're missing that piece. But the overlay is mapped on there, and we, and that map was also given to Northern Chuma tribal council.
Okay, so, this will be, will show up on, you know, for sale deeds and stuff?
It shows up on the zoning map, right? So, anytime you're looking to find out what your zoning is, so you know what your development standards are, it has the overlays on it. And it's like, you know, if you're in that area, you're going to have to do an archaeological study.
Okay, great.
I understand how this would be of benefit to somebody who owns a piece of land and is contemplating developing it. But what's the process when there's a prospective buyer for a piece of land? Is it his agent that has to provide him with notice that he should look into this? What's, what's the, what's the notice to...
There's, I mean, well, I mean, all these documents are public. You can, when you're buying a house, look through the city's zoning code. If you looked at the city zoning map to find out what zone the house was in that you were looking to purchase, it would show up on there.
Okay, so, but in effect, that answers my question then. Then, the responsibility, ultimately, the responsibility is on the prospective buyer. But really, the responsibility is on his agent because if things go south, he's going to be sued because he didn't adequately inform his client.
Yeah, I mean, I think typically, these things, you know, when you're going through the process here, and if you were in an archaeologically sensitive area, and say, if it was related to a house or something, it doesn't stop you necessarily from doing things, but it gives you a process to go through if you...
Well, I see that, but I'm recalling the reams of documents, most of them having to do with disclosure that are associated with buying a piece of property. And there ought to be some kind of a, well, you know, the disclosure document that says, you have to tell me about ESHA and forest fires and earthquakes, et cetera, et cetera. It should also have this cultural disclosure.
So, you may all recall seeing this if you've purchased property recently or within the last fifteen years, twenty years, maybe. You will usually get something from them that's part of that documentation that says, here's all the things that we know about, and you need to go talk to the city about what other things might actually be out there. And they put you on notice, and you... And they put you on notice, and you initial in the corner, that says you'll do that if you're interested. That's the standard paperwork that goes along with most sales. I would be surprised if you were working with any sort of real estate agent or broker that doesn't give you that same paperwork. That's...
They should be aware. I mean, and because this is a public document now. I mean, I remember the one that blew me away was crop dusting. I'd never considered crop dusting here. But, you know, it could happen out in the valley, in Morro Valley somewhere. So I think any smart real estate person is going to include this as something to protect their person they're representing.
Does this document, that sort of begs the key question. Does this document go to real estate offices in the region, or something?
Does it go to them? No, not necessarily. But anybody that's doing business in the city is usually familiar with zoning. And they call us all the time. We talk to most of the real estate agents that are doing business here, most of the real estate agents or realtors that are doing business here. You know, most of them, you know, have some familiarity with land use laws and things like that, because they're dealing in land use. So they're usually up on looking at zoning and letting people know what the zoning of their property is and those types of things. They'll often verify, you know, what's in the MLS for the use that's on the property and those types of things. I mean, if there's a question, you know, they see something different on a zoning map than the designation that's on the MLS listing, they'll call us and go, what's this thing, what's this property zoned? Because we see that your zoning map shows something different. That's a fairly common call that we get, so.
Would this overlay trigger a, be shown up on a title report?
No.
Does it show up on something that an agent would look to, to find out how this piece of property is zoned?
The zoning map. It literally shows up on the zoning map. So if you're looking to see what the zone is, you'll look up on the map, and the map has the overlay on it. And if you're in it, then you might ask, the next question is, it has all the overlays, you know, on the map. And so if you look and you say it's there, and there's three overlays on it, usually you would go and look up what those are. And they oftentimes ask us, like, what is, what does the language in these areas mean? Or, you know, what's the ramifications of being located in that overlay? And that's fairly common.
So Scott, when you look up an APN, you can, you know, dive into what the zoning and what is on that. Would the overlay show up in that APN listing?
No, and the zoning on those things is notoriously incorrect. It usually just talks about land use. We'll have wrong zoning on it all the time.
GIS would speak to all these, all these layers.
We have GIS maps, yes. And we haven't published a service as of yet. We have the ability to turn our tracking system public facing, and probably will some point down in the future do that. That has some of that information in it as well. Just depends. We have our GIS server, so we can actually publish services to our website. We haven't done that yet. It'd be nice once we're done with this to do that, though, so you have a little bit of an interactive map. You can turn on layers, that type of thing. It's kind of a cool feature. So it's one of the things I've talked to our GIS person about.
And that's connected through the county, too, the county GIS maps?
It's ours, it's the city, City of Morro Bay. They don't maintain our zoning.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, I guess Chapter seventeen point one two, Environmental, Sensitive Habitat, ESHA Overlay District. Does anybody have anything to say about this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the determination of buffers. I think, Joseph, you had some comments on that?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm... I'm looking at the fifty, the exceptions. I'm always looking at the exceptions. So the fifty-foot wide buffer, which would render a lot undevelopable, undevelopable. I'm just sensitive to when a person buys and what he knows about that property when he buys it. So I'd just like to make sure that it can't be used as an excuse. This is a piece of property that's being sold at a bargain, and someone scoops it up and then says, gee, the ESHA allows me no way to develop this piece of property, therefore, we have to bend or reduce the ESHA buffer. And that's my concern. I don't know how to address it, but anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we have the policies in place to allow reduction in the buffers to accommodate the scenario where if we were to, like, our current ESHA buffer and setback requirements, and I've talked to you before about this, we have a very specific circumstance where it renders a property undevelopable. That's a taking, flat out, not a question. And so we talked to Coastal about it. We said, hey, what are we supposed to do with this? I said, we're going to, we're going to come up with some process on our side that allows them to do some minimal type of something, because the city's not buying a lot. And Coastal says, oh, we do this kind of really funky process where we go, these policies are infeasible. But they're black and white, and they say you can't do it. So, I mean, you have us saying, hey, this is what it says, and we're telling you to go ahead and approve some development here anyway, because we don't want to buy Citizen Joe's lot, right? So instead of doing that, we talked to Coastal, and we said, we had that issue, we talked to them about it, and that whole process sounded pretty awful. And they don't like doing it either. And I said, well, we're updating our LCP, so we need to put something in here for that. And he's like, okay. And he gave us some generalized direction. I say, Kevin, it was Kevin Kahn. And so that's what we've, this is what we've come up with. They haven't reviewed and provided input on this yet, though. But this was based on guidance provided by Coastal to address that specific issue. And in general, this is, I guess, what some other cities have done when they updated theirs and had similar situations. So, and again, this was general guidance that he provided us. It wasn't actual written language that he gave us. And so we'll have a better idea about what they find to be okay. We could have left it the way that it was. It just left that situation hanging out there that we didn't want to run into. And so it's nice, if you know you have a situation like that that exists, that you have policies that deal with it. That's why it looks the way that it does.
We still have, we still have some authority to say, don't do something silly, right? I mean...
It's really the minimal, the minimum amount of development in those scenarios. It's not like, hey, you get to, because it says you can do some of these things. It really also says it's the minimal amount to get value out of the lot. I mean, that's open to broad interpretation.
And I think, one of the things I remember is, we had a city lot that was very modest. It was on one of the west side parcels on Route one, and it was really undersized.
It was on Minidora.
And people came in with a great plan for that thing. And it was one of those things that I thought was great. And it's one of these things that most people have said, we can't develop on that lot. And I just wonder, where's the threshold for that? Because as the properties get more and more expensive, people would say, I can't develop this lot unless I can put a 3,000-square-foot house, 3,000-square-foot house there. But that's not what you're talking about.
Absolutely not. It really is, so there are thresholds that go along with making the determination as to whether something's a taking or not. If you're removing all economic value, meaning they can't do anything with it, that's allowed under the zoning classification for the property, right? So you have zoning that's on your property. You look at it, and you say, I can do this list of things. But that says, I can't do any of them. That removes all economic value, potentially.
The one I'm thinking of now is that sliver next to Lemos.
That's all we're talking about. Oh, yeah. Or not next to Lemos, but further south, along the drainage on Quintana.
Yeah.
Sort of south of Couch Potato, right?
But, I mean, I think you've answered my concern, but I'm thinking of, I was thinking of that piece of property, too. And in an era of small houses, okay? But that didn't, that didn't exist a while ago, but now does. And so what was formerly an undevelopable, developable piece of property is now theoretically something you could do with it. So it's, I guess, I'm just saying that we would have to look very closely before we decided that this piece of property is an absolute taking, because you can't do anything with that property, because...
Yeah, yes. And it would go, and it would go through a discretionary process, and likely a fairly contested one, I would imagine. Because you want it, the buffers are here, and we want projects to comply with our buffer requirements. So it better be a really good reason why you're not doing that. And there better be really good justification for that. The thought that we're talking about is one that we've went round and round on, and not been able to figure out a way to even put a parking lot in there, you know, for something. So we, it was, we were stuck. And we literally went to Coastal, like, what do you, what are we supposed to do with this? And they kind of said, this is the process that we use. And, I mean, to say that he was less than thrilled about having the conversation with us would be an understatement.
And I would, I would add to that. Coastal's always been very clear with the city, and really with any city in the coastal zone, that they will only permit the minimum amount of development in order for it not to be a taking. So if that means you have an 800-square-foot commercial building, but you wanted a 4,000, you're getting 800. I mean, their threshold is really high. So, and that's what Kevin, Coastal staff, had made clear with staff, is that they would allow that LCP override, but a really high bar to meet.
I guess the only thing about the 50 feet that concerns me is, is we do have a couple still exceptional parcels in town that are larger, that are undeveloped. And if the thought was that the 100-foot is going to go down to 50, almost as a given, I think it would be unfortunate. You know, all the sites along the creek, I mean, if the, we saw flipos today, you know, in the future, that would come back. I'd hate to think that we lost 50 feet of ESHA protection or enhancement on a lot that's potentially going to be totally redone at some point. Or the ones up by Delmar School, or the, you know, if the trailer parks would try to do something along the creek, or even when we have the, you know, the dinergy plot that extends all the way to the creek. I'd hate to think we've lost dimension just because we're thinking in terms of the small housing plots and things like that.
So the buffer is required to be of sufficient size to ensure the biological integrity and preservation of the habitat they're designed to protect. And so that's based on the resource survey and study that is required to be done with evaluation and recommendations for protection of that ESHA. And then it's saying that terrestrial ESHA should have a minimum buffer. So your recommendation, say it's, well, the report says you just need 25 feet to ensure that biological integrity. Well, this is saying, even so, you have to do 50. So it's minimum 50, but it may be more. The key piece is the biological integrity and preservation. And then that exception is for exactly the reasons we've been talking about, the takings. And one of the reasons why it is, in a way, fairly nebulous of what, you know, what would render a lot undevelopable, is because you have so many circumstances, right? You have so many levels of importance of ESHA habitat or integrity of habitat. You have so many different instances of what surrounding development is like, and so what would be a reasonable expectation of development. For example, in Cambria, there's whole entire neighborhoods in ESHA. And so what is appropriate development in there, consistent with what everybody else has, is very different than when you have, you know, a certain one site here. You also have different levels of ESHA habitat, particularly as more and more habitat can be designated as sensitive. It's really, it is always a high bar. It'll be interesting to see what Coastal's reaction to this language is. But they're always positioning themselves to be able to say no to development in ESHA and to protect the habitat.
I mean, we could have the same language, but with a 100-foot. We could say it's 100 feet, unless you can document one is adequate at a lower distance.
That would be a really bad idea, within the developed footprint of the city. Because we have, we have drainages that run through the city. I mean, you would start making several of these lots undevelopable, because they have small lot sizes. It's why, it's why our current ESHA policies only apply 100, 100 feet to those areas that are outside of the urbanized area of the city. Inside the urbanized area of the city, the buffer is 50 feet. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
And there's, there is also, and it's D below that, there are also requirements for development outside of a buffer, but within 100 feet of that ESHA. So we're still looking, you know, there's all these gradations of protection, and it's really based around, you know, protection of that habitat in recognition of you're in an incorporated area. So even if you're outside of a buffer, but within 100 feet, there are design and site requirements for development.
I'm not proposing that it would be blanket 100 feet. I think on some of the larger parcels that we still have left, I think going down to 50 feet is a loss of potential to use the environment as a lever for enhancing the ESHA, rather than thinking of it as a limitation on development. I think it's an enhancement to development if you've got a larger parcel. But that's just an opinion.
I have the old visual resource document here. And in, in, in one of the policies, it says that the areas of a minimum of 100 feet from sensitive habitat areas shall be required in, you know, buffering setbacks. In some habitat areas, more than 100 feet shall be required. So if, see, I look at it a little bit different than you, Scott, as far as like a take. I look at it like, okay, it's undevelopable. However, that specific development can occur if there is some kind of a restorative aspect to it. It would have to be, it would, it's added scrutiny, in other words, for that ESHA, you know?
So the policies here require that. I mean, if you're going into the buffers, it requires mitigation, it requires offsetting improvement to the, whatever the ESHA is that's there. I mean, this speaks to that.
Yeah.
I mean, are you saying that you, are you saying that the way that it's written is not enough, or?
Well, I'm kind of...
Are there something specifically more you want in here? I mean, like, it tells it, like, when you're, when you're encroaching on the, on the minimum buffers, it talks about doing mitigation for that, and enhancing whatever the ESHA is that's there. I mean, that's all in here.
Well, it even, it even talks, you know, at 100 feet, between the 150-foot, that there has to be sensitive development that protects the ESHA or restores the ESHA.
So I guess I would say, I guess I would, maybe I put it back this, this way to you, Commissioner Sodasky, would be, is there, do you think that it's, the way the policy's laid out here doesn't do, you're saying it doesn't do enough? Because it speaks to those things you're talking about, I think. But maybe you're reading it and go, no, Scott, that's not enough. I mean, that's fine. I mean, that's a completely valid position to have. I just, I believe that it's doing the things that you're asking it to do? Maybe it's not, though. You know, I mean, I...
Richard. Joseph. The only thing I would add as a safeguard, because the notion of, of what's developable and what isn't can be a pretty elastic kind of thing. I would put wording in there that the, the burden of demonstrating that something is undevelopable, developable, lies with the applicant. And so it's not up to us to prove that there, that there isn't anything possible he can do with the land. It's up to him to prove that. And that's, and I'm, really, I'm not just, you know, trying to, you know, point of a pin. It's a big deal. It has to burden, it really is.
Okay, I think that's a pretty good point to move on. Are you comfortable with that, Scott, or?
I'm sure we can add language to it. I mean, I think it's also presumed. We don't advocate things like that, from a staff standpoint. You don't, you don't...
No, I know.
All that stuff is, you have all the, there's all the studies that are required in here in order for them to, I mean, even we require them, when we look at something and say, oh, that could be ESHA. You need to do a biological evaluation of that drainage right there, and tell us whether it's ESHA or not. And then that study needs to pick up our ESHA policies and evaluate whether it is or not, based on the policies that are in here. So that's how that happens. If they were to come up and say, okay, well, we put the line on, we put the buffer... If they were to come up and say, okay, well, we put the line on, we put the buffer line on the lot and it took the whole lot, that's something we could see. You'd be mapping out where the ESHA is, you're mapping out the buffer, and it, you know, it went beyond that lot by 10 feet. That's a problem. And so we'd be looking at, you know, okay, what happens next?
I have absolutely no doubt that you would be on the right side. Absolutely. I guess I'm thinking in terms of the dispute goes beyond a difference of opinion and they take it to court. And I think there, if that language about who clearly accepted, who has the burden of proof might be what might decide an issue.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I was just saying, there's the presumed process. I don't mind being explicit about things. I don't have a problem with that. Sometimes it's helpful, I mean.
I think also for neophytes coming in too that are not familiar with the process, having that stated upfront or even more clearly, I don't think it hurts, you know?
I mean, again, I would say from the staff standpoint, we're probably pushing in exactly the opposite direction. If I can see a footprint where you can put something that's in an area there, even if it's small, not dissimilar to the Mendoro lot like Commissioner Luke was talking about, that's completely acceptable. I mean, that's, I liked that solution as well for that small lot. I thought that was good. That's an economic, no one could argue that that's not an economic benefit that applies to the lot, you know, or whatever, if it was even smaller than that. I mean, you could have a one bedroom house, you could have a studio. I mean, that's clearly economic benefit that you get out of it. I mean, hardly argue otherwise. So that, I mean, the bar is fairly high, I think, in trying to make those arguments.
I think we had language in the preface document that conceptualizes. I just think that on some of these larger parcels, when we start to look at areas where we're potentially talking about integration into the city, where we've got the wastewater plant, where we've got the tanks being removed, where we've got, you know, the dinerji plant, where we've got the parcel below Delmar School, these are large parcels that have identified ESHAs near them. And I just don't know why we would go in on large parcel development saying this 50-foot thing is the thing to do. That's why I think in a way, if it was targeted toward scale of lot or scale of development, that it might be, I just look at the whole way Delmar Park is done. We have seasonal flooding there all the time in the areas that are cut, where the grass is cut, because it should be wider there where the ESHA goes through. And when we start to develop the areas down below there, if we just keep moving those problems down, we're looking at a restricted situation instead of one where that should be one of those beautiful things that moves through the community. And hopefully someday the park access extends all the way down to Route 1. You can ride your bike through there or something like that. But those things don't happen unless you have them up front. So I think there's an avocational part within the larger general plan language looked before. I just don't know if the teeth down here are strong enough.
So I'll ask you a question. So you deal with, Martha brought this up, so that under that section D there, that talks about what you're supposed to do within the 100 feet. And basically, it's talking about not having development and things like that in there. I mean, is, or would you like to have specific policy to lots that are larger? We can do that. We can have a larger buffer for larger lots. It's, I mean, but these are generally the policies we would apply to the larger buffer. You just have a minimum for a lot size that's X. I mean, really, you have to do the analysis, right? I mean, you have to go and study what the ESHA is and then look at what you're doing. And when you do that evaluation, it'll tell you, your buffer needs to be this, or if you're not at that, you're impacting it. It's supposed to evaluate what development potential, what potential developmental impacts could happen as a result of developing a lot and, you know, an adjacency to that ESHA. You're supposed to protect the ESHA. That's the entire, you know, point behind all of this is protecting the ESHA and not encroaching on it or impacting it negatively.
It's just, it's hard to play out all the scenarios when you see the language there.
I get it.
I just want to make sure if we're going with something new, error on the side of the ESHAs are enhanced rather than degraded just because of a biological survey. I think that's going to be the signature of the town is how environmentally sensitive we are to what we already have here is a wonderful thing. We don't have to add anything. We just have to make sure we don't lose some of these environmental conditions that, you know, 50 years ago, we thought were wastelands and swamps and things. Now we know they're the jewels.
Yeah, that's the good stuff, right?
And we can't go forward with something that moves that backwards.
So don't we see on the biological reports and the vegetative reports, don't they come back with determinations on this should be a 50-foot, this should be 100-foot buffer, you know, on those reports? Isn't that?
They speak to all of those things, and then you have the design and siting section that, you know, talks about, you know, even more, like, say, your biological report came back and said, oh, no, this is fine, you know, within this narrower frame, but this says 100 feet, you're supposed to be looking at these things unless there's a reason why you're not doing it. So I mean, there's, this provides you the lanes that you can run inside of, and also provides you parameters that the biological report would be speaking to. You know, I mean, this is telling the story about what we think is important and what we want to see happen there. I mean, so I would ask you to look at this. If you think this is inadequate to do the things that you want it to do, then let me know because we can go search out, we can improve things, we can make it stronger. But this is what's telling the story. This tells you to go do the thing, you're bringing up all things that I see in here. And if you're looking at it and you're saying, I don't see that, I want to know that because I want to make it more explicit or add additional wording to make it do that, because it seems like it's talking about restoration, it's talking about preservation, and those are the things that you've been bringing up. And so.
The one thing I don't see on it, Scott, is I don't see delineation, you know, for, you know, after the development, I don't see, you know, and this may or may not be, you know, be beneficial, is delineating the ESHA or delineating the, you know, through fencing or restrictive access on the developed site, you know, either through fencing or, you know, just basically citing a delineation of the existing buffer zone. Did I miss that somewhere on the?
So something that permanently delineates?
Something that would be permanently, say, like we had down at the creek, you know, the creekside boundaries, you know, where we didn't allow development, or actually where there was, up by the Delmar, we had an ESHA that ran through a site. And one of the problems was that the previous owners had degraded the ESHA by running their four-wheelers and stuff through there. If there had been a delineation of what that ESHA was at the time, it would have been readily available, readily visible to the neighbors that these people shouldn't have been doing that.
So there's a couple of things that could happen, and Cindy brought up a good point. We did that on the plant, which is on Beachcomber, and we require dedication of the ESHA area, right? Was it Neesman?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the city accepted it and it was against title.
Yeah, so it gets recorded on the property. Anybody that buys it later knows that that's there, one of the issues that you've been bringing up, I think, Commissioner Graffia. So we could add in a requirement to do that, so.
And it's in our current code.
Yeah.
That required to dedicate ESHA.
Yeah.
Okay, but then delineating it on the site as a physical, you know, physical marker or boundary or fencing, now is that preferred or not preferred to keep the ESHA separated from human activity?
So I think it's just difficult because the ESHA grows and changes.
Right.
I do think that with the report, and that has the mitigation for, or recommendations for mitigation, the mitigation program, it does have requirements for specific measures to ensure the success in restoration and enhancement, provisions for acquiring title or other property interest. So there may be through that, you know, program that's developed based on the specific site characteristics and the development characteristics that may include something or other. But again, it's really based on that, the site-specific characteristics.
So let's take Panorama. We have an ESHA running through the north side of Panorama. That goes through a couple iterations here and gets developed out into residential development. What's to stop somebody from, you know, other than somebody telling them not to from the city or something, what's to stop somebody from, you know, a bunch, you know, kids building a fort or, you know, creating, you know, you know, a tree fort or going into that ESHA and degrading that ESHA just because they're kids or they're, you know, they're teenagers and there's no physical delineation of that?
In other cities, I'm sure that could happen. In Morro Bay, point out a location where I'm not getting the call five minutes after they start doing that. And I mean, I literally mean that. I mean, it's, we have watchdogs all over town. I mean, I don't know that that's as big of a concern, although the point that you're trying to make, I get it. I just don't know that we want to go fencing off every single ESHA. Part of the nice thing about them is the beauty of them, and you have buffers, and buffers we can go into. We can use them recreationally in the buffer portion of it, meaning you could have a path that walks along through there or something, and you'd want to be next to it and probably want to be next to that and not next to a fence, right? So I mean, I would see a downside if we're fencing all these things off because it doesn't really give you access to it, I mean visually, you know, I mean, you feel separated from it. So I don't know if you want to go, we'd want to go down that road.
Well, I'm just bringing this up, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking through it too, as you stated, so.
Some kind of, maybe not a fencing, but some kind of monument.
Well, like a gas line is marked with a yellow flag. I mean, I don't know if the precedent exists that we could do that, but I mean, why not?
Well, and also the proximity to development is taken into consideration in what is required for the protection and the enhancement of these habitat areas. So these are all considerations, and in some cases, actually fencing may be appropriate. In other cases, you know, maybe it's not, but, or not necessary or not recommended. So it's all these specific characteristics that are taken into consideration in that development of the mitigation program or the recommendations to move development. And that's one of the things that's hard about pinning all this down in here because we don't know. And it's really about, again, the bottom line being protection and enhancement of the habitat. So that's always.
So that would be looking at more site-specific remedies.
Right.
I guess the thing that I wonder, and like I say, my sense is from what my recollection is, the avocational part is in the other documents, but there's nothing really in zoning that's appropriate to say, we recommend you consider expansion of ESHAs as a trade-off for density or something like that. You know, because I would be much happier seeing somebody give us something like that. And I just see things like tonight where we're adding these, all of this development. And in our traditional way of thinking, you know, our parking is going to be challenged and the nature of open space is going to be challenged. And there's something about the, as the density becomes, and I think it's possible to design it really well. I see other places that I think are much denser than we are that are really beautiful, but it seems like they also have the idea that you absolutely protect and expand some of these wild areas. And so it's not just protecting the ESHA, it's actually using the ESHA as a design feature in the town by trying to expand it. So if the front part talks about our ecological visions and things like that, then maybe that's something that Scott and the staff talk to when people come in and say, they point to that. It doesn't have to be in here with teeth, but it just seems like this is that yes or no. 50 feet, yeah, you've got a butterfly, you've got a, you know, woodchuck, 50 feet. 51 feet, no, we don't have to do anything there. But I'd rather have them say, I'm going to give you 100 feet. Let me do this over here.
Well, but it does say, so in the evaluation of ESHA and the determination, you are looking at the integrity of that habitat. And so sometimes the recommendation may be, you know, okay, well, there's the development here, it's already this impacted habitat, go and protect some other habitat that actually at the end of the day is going to be better than whatever you, if you would have protected the small isolated piece of habitat. Well, yes, it's ESHA, but it's the only three square foot area of ESHA, you know, in a quarter mile. So, you know, that's fine. You can disturb that, but you need to mitigate somewhere else, and it's off-site and it's adding to this wild area. So that's in there. As far as a density bonus program, you don't have that. I don't know that you want to give that. But so all of these things are really, and again, they're in here because it's all, you have to consider everything and then figure out the appropriate mitigation based on those. Anyway.
You know, when I looked at this, and I don't know if the language, but the language in the old document, in what I'm looking at is policy 11.06, okay? And it talks about a minimum of 100 feet or more. And it has, should I just read it? It's not that long, okay? Buffering setback areas, a minimum of 100 feet from sensitive habitat areas shall be required. In some habitat areas, setbacks of more than 100 feet shall be required if environmental assessment results in information indicating a greater setback area is necessary for protection. No permanent structures shall be permitted within the setback areas except for structures of minor nature such as fences or at-grade improvements for pedestrians or equestrian trails. Such projects shall be subject to review and comment by the Department of Fish and Game and prior to commencement of development within the setback areas. For other wetland habitats, if application of a 100-foot buffer on previously subdivided parcels would render the subdivided parcel unusable for its designated use, the setbacks area may be adjusted downward only to the point where the designated use is accommodated, but in no case is the buffer to be less than 50 feet. This lesser setback shall be established in consultation with the Department of Fish and Game and blah, blah. But that kind of language kind of like feels like, okay, we, you know, we value the, go ahead, Cindy.
Thanks for reading that. That's a mouthful for staff because you have to read it again and again when we're talking with potential applicants. So that's the exact policy that I had cited with our conversation with Kevin Kahn. We had a property in town, it's not even 100 feet wide. Bio report came back and said it's adjacent to wetlands, like on the property line. Coastal uses one of three indicators for determining wetland habitat. And so you would think you go to policy 11.06 because that talks about how you would get a buffer reduction, except for in the middle of that paragraph that you just read, what you said was, is for projects other, excuse me, other than wetland habitat. And that's the operative word, other than wetland habitat. So that was great if it's a riparian habitat, sand dune habitat, you know, what have you, but, or dune scrub, excuse me, but not on wetlands. And so right now, we have no provision in our policy for someone who is an 80-foot wide property that's got wetlands on their back doorstep. So, and then, you know, so just wanted to clarify that, and I apologize for interrupting you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on to 17.12.050, wetland, deep water areas and other water areas. So we got protection required, wetland delineation, methodology and recommendations. Any?
I would note that we're right at 10 o'clock.
Okay. So what do we guys want to do? Are we calling it at 10 o'clock here, or?
I've been fading for the last half an hour.
Okay. I think, I think we're good. I think we'll, okay, so let's, let's end it at this point here on, and we'll pick up at 17, we'll go over 17.12.050 when we. at seventeen, we'll go over 17.12.050 when we reconvene on this. And so item, so we're on to Item D, unfinished business. We have none. Planning Commissioner comments. Do we have any, anybody want to make any comments?
Just one quick one.
Okay.
Remember to vote. November 6th.
Okay, Community Development Director's comment. The one thing I would ask, Scott, is what happened with our wind farm? Where was that?
A couple of things. I'm going to speak also right off of Commissioner Barone's comment about come out and vote. That's going to, that's on the sixth, which is the next time you meet. We won't be meeting here because this is where elections take place for the, where you cast your ballot for the city of Moro Bay. And so we'll be at the community center. That's what we'll be adjourning to at the end of the meeting, Chair Luer. The informational session that they had for the wind farm last week was great. It was Alah Weinstein and, her name escapes me, from ENBW, the partnership that they formed for the wind farm. They came out and they gave a presentation that kind of showed what they were talking about. They showed the location where the wind farm would likely be located, which is kind of out off the Hearst Castle area. And then they would be connecting to the grid through our outfall line and coming in and connecting to the PG&E transfer station. They talked also about reaching agreement with the Fisherman's Association, about coming to terms with, I think, some monetary compensation. And then having policies in that document that talk about possible training opportunities for our fishing fleet and the use of our fishing fleet for maybe helping out with maintenance and those types of things. They talked about the possibility of having, you know, maintenance facilities here in our harbor that would service the wind farm.
New jobs?
Yeah, potentially new jobs for folks, you know, headed household jobs, right? I mean, that's pretty interesting. Those things are massive, the tip of the blade, 700 feet. I was like, wow, I didn't realize they were so tall. Fascinating, I mean, just a fascinating idea, potentially as many as 100 out 33 miles off the coast. They had some exhibits up on the wall to show you what the visual impact would be from up on the hill where Hearst Castle is, right? Because you're up high enough to where you could see them, and they were just like, they were just like this little, on the horizon.
Yeah.
Because they're 33 miles out, you could barely see them in the photo renderings that they did as the photo sims. And I was surprised, I thought they would be more visible, but really not much. And on any given day, it's probably a hazy enough story, you wouldn't see them at all. So that was, that was kind of interesting. I thought, again, I thought they were going to be a lot more visible out there. I thought that would be a big point of contention, but it seems like that might be not much of one. They explained the process they're going through, and they're getting ready to release the bid that they'll be making. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, I guess, will be leasing, releasing the opportunity for folks to weigh in and bid on the lease site. There's at least three companies out there that are looking at it, Statoil, Magellan, and was Trident Wind, it's now Castle, Castle Wind? ENBW is a German power company that's about the size, from what they said in the meeting, of PG&E. So they're big. They're one of the top three power companies in Germany. So again, it was a fascinating presentation. It was interesting to see all the, you know, sort of nuts and bolts as to what goes into that. I've been part of the team that's been engaging on an ongoing basis for the last two-plus years with them, so kind of already had the peek behind the scenes a little bit with some of that. But it was great to get that information out to the public. We're going to have another public information session coming up here in a little bit. We're working with them on a public benefits agreement that'll be going to council, probably two meetings out, so in December, which would outline the overall benefits agreement that they would have with the city. They get extra points if that gets included in their package they submit for the bid. They can get extra credit sort of for that if they have an agreement with the city. That agreement would cover things like use of the outfall for a wind farm and then training opportunities and other things, kind of similar, not dissimilar to the agreement they reached with the fishing folks. So it'll be something along those lines. But again, that should be coming probably two meetings from now at council, I think. We're kind of going back and forth on the wording of it right now, so internally.
Are they still going to, you know, they're taking up the pipelines, is what it looks like, you know, outside, we've got barges and cranes out there.
Oh, so that, yeah, that was, so Dynegy, Vistra Energy, they were required by state lands to remove the, you mean the pipe that was out in the water? Yeah, that was, that's a decommissioning requirement from state lands. They were able to get a bunch of the line that came in when they got in closer, they were getting into the surf zone, and as they were coming up through the beach, they stopped. We have the dune area, right? And they left that intact, so they capped the pipe, and I don't know if they slowly filled it or not, but it's capped at the edge of the dune. They didn't want to disturb environmentally sensitive habitat, right? Purtinent conversation. And they removed it out to this, you know, as you got onto the beach in the area where it was wet, and then they stopped, and then they were trying to do a hydraulic ram to see if they could break it loose to get the rest of the pipe out. It's super, it's pretty deep out there, and then it makes kind of a, kind of starts coming up, and I guess they couldn't break it loose. So they ended up cutting it off as much as they could, and then they're just going to fill it back up, and a portion of it's going to remain in that area. The surf zone was just too difficult for them to get it out of.
Why weren't they, why didn't they use that as a conduit for the input lines coming in from the wind farm? Why, you know, it almost seems.
I mean, I guess it's nice that they're not, they didn't choose to use that, because, well, because part of the decommissioning required those lines to be removed.
Right.
Not dissimilar to the Chevron property outside city limits, they have, I think, two lines coming out of there. And Kayuka CSD for their wastewater treatment plant is trying, is working out, is negotiating lease of one of their lines so they don't have to demolish both of them because they have to go through the exact same process that the Dynegy/Vistra was going through in Moro Bay to remove their lines that are out there. I don't know if there's two or three, I apologize, I don't remember. But I know they're going to try to use one of those, so they're going to make use of that. But we own our outfall line here, and they're going to use that to come in, so we get benefit out of that. And that outfall line comes within 150 feet of the PG&E transfer station, so it brings you right there. You don't have to get very far in to get the rest of the way in. So it's a good benefit for the city if we can make that happen, and there'll be compensation that comes along with that, which would be nice, given the hit we took when the power plant closed down, right? I mean, right at the end there, I think we were losing about $150,000 a year, so that's tough.
Okay, well, thanks for the report on that. Is there anything else you?
Hey Scott, real quick, on that, you know, you're trying to get an agreement with the city, which would be a plus. Are they working also in agreement with the native, maybe with that, working with an agreement with the first peoples?
I believe they've had conversations. I don't know what the extent of those conversations are. Alah Weinstein, she's big on the public outreach. Obviously, you've seen her around here for two years, you know, conducting outreach with various groups. And she's indicated that she's spoken with some of them. I don't know who she's spoken with. I'm sure she probably spoke with Fred, and then maybe had outreach with, potentially with Slenden Tribe, probably Patty Dunton, or Karen White. I think that's the northern Monterey area person, I try to keep them all straight. But I think they had had some discussions with them. I just don't know what the extent of them are. I haven't had a lengthy conversation about that with them.
And did you hear of any discussion about the migratory birds and, you know, since we're a bird thing, is that something that they're?
So they did talk about the location and where they, and where they're at. They said, you know, a lot of the studies that they have for the existing wind farms out there suggest that the wind farms create air pressure differences, and birds tend to fly around them. You might, you're probably not going to eliminate all the possible bird strikes, but they do tend to avoid those when they're out in the water because of the, because that's how a lot of the seabirds navigate, is through pressure differential, is the way it was described in the presentation. I'm definitely not an expert there, but that's one of the things. And then there's not a, we don't have a whole lot of birds that migrate through that area from what they were saying, based on studies that are out there, I guess. Again, I'm not experts on any of that. That's, I'm providing you information and sort of can, you know, condensing it for purposes of brevity, but that's what was explained at the meeting, I guess.
Yeah, most of the migratory birds stay closer to the coastline.
One thing I found out, too, the college of engineering had some big wind farm people come out. It wasn't associated with this at all. They were talking about production on buildings. And the thing I learned from that was that the taller it is, the larger it is, the less impact it has on the birds. It's actually the ones that are attached to buildings that are the disaster. And so the things like we see in Tehachapi are significant logarithmic factors of impact on the birds versus the ones that are attached to buildings.
Yeah, and the way it was described at the meeting is seabirds tend to be, she said, a lot smarter, I think. I'm not going to get into all that, but she did say, you know, the seabirds, you know, tend to navigate with that air pressure differential, and that's not what land birds tend to navigate with, I guess because there's land. You can use that for navigational purposes. So I don't, again, I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs of it. That's just what was expressed at the meeting. I'm just conveying that information, what was said there. I don't really know anything beyond that.
All right. At this point, we'll adjourn to the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting at the, it's going to be at the Moro Bay Community Center at 1001 Kennedy Way on November 6. And once again, that's November 6, that's when we vote. So it'll be at 6:00 PM, and see you guys there. Thank you.